Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you for joining us. Today is our second, or at our second budget workshop. Today's budget workshop will be over parks and recreation, well, actually, development services, parks and recreation, libraries, the health department, animal care services, and sustainability and coastal resiliency initiatives. So with that, I will ask Ms. Huerta, please call the roll.
Mayor Paulette Juárdor, council members Roland Barera.
Here.
Sylvia Campos is absent. Gil Hernández.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Jim Klein.
Here.
Mike Pusley.
Everett Roy.
Here.
Dan Suckley.
Here.
City manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
City attorney Miles Rizley. Mayor and council, a quorum of the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Mr. Zanoni.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, mayor, and good morning, mayor and members of the council. So this is our third workshop. The first one we had this week was actually the second because we did that rate structure.
Oh, right.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we're going to begin with development services. We have numerous options if we can't get through all of this today, and we'll talk to you about those at the end of the meeting. We did have a couple council members ask us for additional information in the presentations, and we'll begin that next week, showing more trend analysis to include multiple-year budget analyses. So we didn't have time to do it for this. However, starting next week, we'll have that in the presentations to help the council with more trend analysis. And then also, just as a reminder, questions that the departments or any staff member cannot answer in these workshops, we follow up with a memo to city council, usually the Friday of the week with these responses. So from Tuesday's workshop, we had seven outstanding questions that we couldn't answer. Those are tracking now, and the departments will answer those. We'll get you either all or some of them, starting this Friday or early next week. So that's our protocol with the budget workshops. Okay, so with that, we're going to have Al Raymond, the development services director, come on up and present his budget for the fiscal year '24.
Good morning, mayor and council. Al Raymond, director of development services. I've got my staff here, and it doesn't say that, but I'd like to introduce them. Naina Nixamendez, director of land development. Mike Dice, of course, building division. Tracy Cantu, code enforcement, and Grayson is our business manager. Our mission statement, mission statement of development services is to implement and enforce sustainable development regulations to build a strong community, enhance economic opportunity, and ensure a dynamic framework for quality growth and development. As we work to achieve this mission, we will provide first-rate customer service, continuous process improvement, including working on shortening this mission statement, and to ensure our staff is knowledgeable and experienced. Right out of the gate, about development services, to the left, it's just a snapshot of residential permitting overall, all things new construction, remodels, that kind of thing. In 2022, we issued about four thousand, a little over four thousand residential permits. Currently, in '23, we are trending about 10% less than that, right? So we'll end up somewhere around 3,600 permits. To bring that home a little bit, in '22, we issued a little over 1,300 new residential permits. In '23, at the end of July, we are trending about 750. So there's a little bit of a drop-off, as expected, in the economy. In the center there are commercial. We issued a total of 948 permits. Right now, in '23, we are trending about 26.5% higher or better than that, to be around 1,200 commercial permits, all things commercial, new starts, interior fence outs, remodel, that kind of thing. And as you know, on June 1st, code enforcement joined our operation, and in '22, code enforcement initiated a little over 52,000 cases. Over the next two years, with some process improvements and efficiencies, we hope to be 6% higher than we were in '22 going forward. Of course, here's our organization. I mentioned Mike Dice is over all things building division, plan review, permit issuance, building inspections, and the issuance of certificate of occupancy is under his authority. As I said, we just took on code enforcement, and that's Tracy Cantu. All things property maintenance, right? And then Naina handles land development. That is plating, zoning, and DSD engineering. And DSD engineering is another way of saying public improvements, roadways, everything under the street, stormwater, wastewater, stormwater, wastewater management. Some achievements in the current fiscal year. As you know or may not know, on June 5th, we launched an updated new version of N4, which is our permitting software. DigYouPlan is our document review module, and Rhythm is our new portal, our new dynamic portal, right? It helps improve the customer experience. And Evolution is the new cash management software. All of this has kind of modernized our operation, and, you know, it's just done tremendous work for us. So now, instead of, before, you would have to email your drawings to us or bring them hard copy, and we would scan them in and start our work. Now, you can deal with us totally online, which is, brings us into the 21st century in this operation. Achievement 2 is the capital improvement advisory committee. Our CAC, we've been doing this for about two and a half years, and at our last CAC meeting, that group approved our land use map, and they approved our water master plan, right? Ultimately, we'll come to planning commission, and ultimately, we'll obviously come before you. We have three other plans. We need to get that group to approve wastewater, stormwater, and transportation. Achievement 3, as you know, in January, this council adopted the 2021 international codes, which went into effect August 1st. And we're excited about that, of course. Of course, anything, and we've communicated with the community, anything that they started, and that's long in the tooth, under the 2015 code, we, of course, will still review under that code. But for all intents and purposes, as of August 1st, we're in this new code across the board, which is just, you know, great. And then, of course, achievement 4, code enforcement transition to development services, right, on June 1st. Yeah, June 1st, a couple of months ago. This made sense to us because it is two sides of the same coin. One half of the department deals with the environment being built. The other half of the coin deals with the environment, deals with the built environment. So it allows us to develop some efficiencies in operation to move the overall department forward. So we're excited about that. Performance measures. In residential plan review, our goal is three days. In '23, we're meeting that 96% of the time. We want a target in '24, making sure we stay at 85% of the time. And I attributed that to the low submission of residential permits, which is why we can, you know, have such a great batting average there. The turnaround for commercial plan review, and this is just getting to the initial review. You submit it, and initially, we want to get our comments back to you in 10 working days. In '23, we're hitting around 90, hitting that goal about 93% of the time. Our target for '24 is 90% of the time. So we're trending well there. Inspections, if you call for inspection on Monday, by the end of the day, Tuesday, we hope to have completed that inspection, and we're meeting that goal about 90% of the time in '23, where we are now. In '24, we want to target that, to push that to 95% of the time. Zoning cases put on city council agenda. Zoning cases obviously first need to go to planning commission and then be placed on the city council agenda. At the start of this fiscal year, that was 90 calendar days. We, through efficiencies, have updated that, reduced that to 75 days, working efficiently, changing our processes, those kinds of things. And we're meeting that goal about 95% of the time. And of course, in '24, we still want to target 95% of the time. Plating cases, plating cases put in, placed on the planning commission agenda around 45 days. There have been some new legislative changes with plating, and we need to integrate that into our performance measures. But in general, we would like to accomplish our plating reviews and place them on a planning commission agenda in 45 calendar days. In '23, we're hitting that goal about 85% of the time, and in '24, we're targeting 95%. And of course, public improvement reviews, and that's all things roadways, utilities, under the streets, stormwater, wastewater, water. At the start of fiscal year, that was a 35-day, 35 calendar day review. We've been able to, through efficiencies, again, to reduce that to 15-day, 15 calendar days, and we're hitting that number about 90% of the time. And in '24, FY '24, we're targeting 95%.
Hey.
Yes.
Al, so, plan reviews, but what about, is that inclusive of when the permit is issued? The certificate of occupancy or the permit is issued? I mean, from the time. So plan reviews, I mean, just, could that mean that somebody reviewed the plans and they, you know, they said, nope, this is unacceptable, these are the problems?
Correct. So if you submit a plan review, and if it's a residential plan review, we, our goal is to get it reviewed in three business days or less.
So it's just a response. It's not necessarily a permit is issued.
Correct.
Can we get that information?
Sure.
And then.
What, the total time it takes?
Yes, sir.
Say, from plan review to CO?
Permit issuance or CO.
Yeah, and then, if you could pull out, you remember, we talked once about the outliers? Because like, you know, if you've got a residential builder that they're just doing spec homes, I imagine that that turns around, the turnaround is pretty quick.
It's quicker, right.
Yeah, so if you could, I'd like to see it. I don't know about the rest of the council. And if you want to just send it to me or copy everybody, you don't have to make any presentation. But, yeah, I think that time from, number one, when, oh man, when it takes for, before a permit is issued, and then once again, if you, because the ones that we get, the ones that we get the calls on, you know, are, you know, are not the, once again, the spec homes, you know. So, yeah, if you could get that to us, that'd be great.
Will do, sir.
Councilman, just, you want that for residential and commercial or just residential?
Well, I know some of the challenges that we have are commercial. I guess, you know, my thing is that, you know, the calls I get, sometimes, we know what we have. Where we've got somebody that, either they've got a substandard contractor or you've got people that believe in workarounds that don't necessarily comply. I remember one time in my business, everybody says that, well, this is the law. I said, is that the law or is that what we want it to be? You know, it depends on what convenience it serves. But I think that's the thing, is that we need to identify which one of those are us that we, we're, you know, we pay, we pay highly qualified professionals to be able to.
Provide what's required, right?
Well, there's a balance, because the thing is, is we pay for discretion, you know? And the king of discretion in your apartment, in department, is Michael Dice, you know? Because it seems like we have a challenge, then we call Michael, and Michael says he gets it taken care of. And, you know, the thing is, is that, what if he gets hit by a beer truck someday? Then who's going to fulfill that role, you know? And, you know, or, or he gets, you know, or he gets offered a city manager job someplace and gets paid, you know, $372,000 a year, he'll probably take it. So, anyway.
I'll provide both for you.
We like that example better, council.
So just, that's the thing. I'm trying to figure out, that's the challenge that we face, is that we have to, we pay highly qualified professionals for discretion. And that's the thing that we have to get to, because we see three days, but then when we get out, and I see Ben out there and out there, and the challenges that they come up to us are not the three days and not the, you know, or the 10 days.
Understood.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's okay. We're using our light system, but Councilman Roy.
I don't want to get too far in the weeds on this, but I think, especially because this is something I deal with every day in terms of my job, is that I would like to know if anything, in terms of going through that process and getting the certificate of occupancy, what is the number one thing or the top five things? If you have this available without drilling down too much, that is a barrier in terms of getting that certificate of occupancy the first time or second time. And I've got my own opinion, which I won't, because I deal with subcontractors and are actually out there, from a bank perspective, doing inspections also. And so I'm just curious, because I think a lot of this could be done in terms of education with the partners in the community. But I think I would like to know if there's something that is a common thread. You know what I mean?
Exactly, and we try. Because. Just to respond to that and kind of what Councilman Barrera was stating, yeah, there's a little bit of discretion that we can provide, right, to keep the process moving. Mike Dice, Yvette Wallace, Naina, everyone knows that and tries to facilitate, right? When people reach out to you before they reach out to us, there's an agenda already in place, right? It is what it is. We know what it is. It is the business that we're in, and yet, we still try to find a way to make it happen, right? So if I were to say to you, here are the top five items, it's different for everyone, because we're, that kind of organization and that kind of skill, per se, is different for every developer, every builder, everyone, right? So we just try to touch the broader surface and saying, hey, if you have challenges that may be, you know, out of sight, you know, reach out to us, and we try to, you know, facilitate from that in, moving forward, right? But I'll still try to get a list of certain things for you.
Because I think a lot of that has to do with our subs, and I think there just needs to be an education process to it. And I'll give you a good example. And it seems like it's geographic. I mean, I had a property in Kingsville that we went back, and it took six times to pass the electrical inspection, you know? And so, but nothing changed. The standard was still the same. It just took them six times to get it right, which held everybody else up. So I just, again, I just want to know if there's a common thread there, because I think working with Ben's organization and that, maybe we can do some educating across the board.
Agreed.
So, thank you.
And Mr. Raymond, one quick question. I was noticing here, your residential and your commercial, the plan reviews. So those targets are going down for '24. Did you go over why that is?
Is it because it's been, they're not going down. It's just some, sometimes the batters are ahead of the pitchers, and sometimes it's not. In this case, because of the kind of downturn in the economy, we are, we're performing at a better pace because we don't, there's not a lot in the hopper. So I don't want to overstate the goal, say, we can achieve this. It's still kind of a, you know, we walk, we crawl, we walk, and then we run, and it's still that process overall.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Development Services overall budget, $16.2 million. And you see to the left, my general fund, that's basically code enforcement, which we're going to change the code compliance. Part of that budget is the CBDG fund, the 300 grand. The overall development services fund is about $10.2 million, and we're wanting to transfer for our building remodel, 1.9 into the CIP fund. As you see to the left, to the top, in '23 and '24, there's very little change transferring to CIP. We transferred 5.9, and this year, we want to transfer 1.9 in the coming year for our building remodel. General fund, 3.4 for code enforcement, 3.8 this year. And as you see, and we'll explain as we get into the presentation, for CBDG fund, we had in '23, 700 grand, basically, and in '24, it's 300 grand. And as you see below, all of the staffing stayed the same, except for. And as you see below, all of the staffing stayed the same, except for in code enforcement. One of the things we're going to talk about, and you see on, on several slides into this, is that we're wanting to transfer some positions that are in CB, that are CBD, CBDG funded from that fund to the general fund, simply because, uh, the CBGD requirements are very limiting, limiting for us. And we can operate better if we move all of our code enforcement into the general fund and use the CBDG funds for needed things throughout the community, housing improvements, repairs, those kinds of things. And we'll talk about that as we go through the presentation.
Yeah, just to add to that, it will take general fund resources, obviously, you know, that we could spend on other things, but HUD really encourages this across the country. So, uh, we're going to do it over a two-year period. We're doing about half this year, in terms of transitioning code, code offices from CDBG funding to general fund, and then we'll do the other half next year, to smooth it out.
And the Development Services Fund you see here, in general, revenues are on the outside in black, and the expenses are in the internal part of the circle. And our general revenues are basically the same, we have fund balance, about two point two million permitting brings in about six million, plan review brings in about one point seven. Internal departments, that's CCW and solid waste. What do we do for CCW? I bring forward to you the reimbursements agreements for trust funds, right? In solid waste, we manage the MSW fee, and we get a, a stipend from solid waste on that. In land developments, about four hundred grand. And of course, you see our expenses in internal, we, like I said, we're transferring, wanting to transfer one point nine to CIP, uh, for our renovation project. allocations are about one point nine as well. Operating, uh, operating budget is one point four, and of course, our personnel is six point eight. Excuse me. The code enforcement, which will ultimately code compliance budget is, is three point eight. And I use the same thing, revenue on the outside, expenses on the inside, but it's all the same, because the general fund doesn't, code enforcement doesn't generate revenue, per se, right? So it's all the same, and the fines and fees, that's really liens being paid by citizens and abatements being paid by citizens. We're only asking for two enhancements in this budget, and both enhancements are for code enforcement. As, as Peter said earlier, we want to transfer five, there, there are nine positions that are funded in the CBDG fund. This budget, we're requesting that five be transferred from that fund to, to the general fund, and in the following year, as you see to the chart on the left, following year, we're going to request that the remaining four, uh, be transferred to, uh, the general fund. It allows us to be more flexible than what we do out in the community, and it just enhance, it allows us to be able to operate consistently across the city. This is our first enhancement. Our second enhancement is this, as you know, in Development Services, we have a incentive program, so if we set base requirements for our staff, um, when they achieve their base requirements, any certifications they get above and beyond the base requirements, we, they can be incentivized. It's a great way to recruit, it's a great way to retain, and it's a great way to develop staff.
Uh, Councilman Pusley.
Sorry.
Question now?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Al, first of all, I want to thank you, uh, for, and Steve, for taking the time to meet with me yesterday and discuss a number of issues. On your, your inter-fund charges, can you give me an example of the type of, so that's a governmental, uh, inner transfer of money? So what are the types of things that you're seeing on the inter-fund charges?
So, specifically, tell me what you're referring to, I'm not quite sure, what page are you...
Okay, if you, well, I'm looking in the, uh, operating budget, under...
Page nine?
Your, your revenue.
Yeah, slide nine, though.
This one?
Yeah.
The inter-departmental charges?
Yes, inter-departmental.
So when I come before you and present a trust fund reimbursement request, that's for CCW, or maybe Public Works. When I come before you and we talk, we do PUDs, uh, and, and there's a, a...
Just a second, Grayson's going to, you know...
Process input, go on, I'm sorry. Sorry. Grayson Wire, uh, business manager. So, CCW also pays us because we do the plat processing, so we're looking at the public improvements in plats. So, instead of them having to review it, our engineering staff does, and they reimburse us for that.
Okay.
For MSW fees, we just get a ten percent administration fee on that, since we're actually processing the permit. Um, and that's all of them. We're also getting a, a little bit of money from general fund for STR permitting this year.
Okay. Okay, um, and with respect to the CDBG, uh, how you ever say it?
CDBG.
Yeah, there you go. That. I, you know, I think that's a great ideal, uh, in, in moving that away, and, and really, that's sort of grant money, anyway, and...
Understood.
And Peter, one of the things that, uh, I think is missing from a lot of this budget reporting is how grants impact our, our different budgets. I mean, for example, at the county, grants is a line item in the budget, because they get so many grants. And, so, did we not hire a grants administrator for the...
We did, yes. We have a grant writer and a grants fiscal kind of administrator that manages, uh, compliance with grants and, and the recording of revenues and expenditures, but we do have a grants writer.
I think it'd be really good to have more information about how that impacts our budget, and have occasionally a report from the grants department about what the kinds of things that they're worried, because I've heard several of the department presentations so far, talking about things that they would like to do, and I keep thinking, well, maybe there's a grant out there. And, so, I think, you know, having more information about what we're doing with respect to grants would be really good for this, for this council and, and for staff to hear.
Okay.
Just a suggestion.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Uh, Councilman Hernandez.
Al, on your, on your budget, it seems like you've been deficit spending here for some time now. Uh, and your ending balance is going to be a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, from a high of, I want to say, nine million, um, last, beginning of last year. So, I mean, you're not going to be able to continue this going forward. What's the plan?
Well, I'm, well, as you know, I'm trying, we are trying, not I'm, we are trying to fund, our goal is to fund the, the building remodel in addition that we're trying to complete, right? The council approved that contract for, um, GANAC, um, which actually, it's, it's my next slide here.
Well, there's questions for that, too, but...
Understood, right. Um, and I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I'm not required to keep a balance like other fund balances are. So we didn't, we didn't rate it completely, but I, I, we moved money as needed to, to make sure we have money for the project that we know is coming, which is our, our remodel.
Okay. Um, I don't recall Development Services being in our, uh, policy to, or, to maintain a balance, because they're not necessarily an operational, uh, department.
Yeah, let me, Eddie, is that, does, does, in our, in the city council approve financial policies? Does Development Services have a, a reserve balance?
We don't have special revenue funds in that particular. We try to keep the, they have been spending quite a bit of money on their remodel. We do anticipate that in twenty-five, that they, you know, their rates are slowly going up a little bit, so they, they will, they will be a balanced budget in twenty-five.
Okay, because their deficit spending, uh, they have a twelve million dollar budget and revenues of eight point eight million. So, I mean, that's, it's a concern going forward, if you are going in that trend. And I understand your, your remodel cost, and we'll talk about that here shortly, but it, it is, that's a significant nexus to be, um, between eight point eight and twelve, twelve point two million, so, uh...
Right, yeah.
Okay.
We agree, Councilman, so the, and again, you mentioned it, but just to repeat it, the one-time capital, uh, project funding is just that, once these two years of funding are allocated, then the, then the anticipation is the operating revenues will equal the operating expenses, or actually, a little bit more.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll have, I'll let you do the presentation on the, uh, remodel, and we'll get to that.
Yeah, in, in twenty-five, we expect their expenditure to be somewhere between nine point five, nine point eight million, but there, we, the revenues will be at that level also.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Barera.
Okay.
Okay. Here, as I said, we're only asking for two enhancements, and both of those enhancements were with, uh, code compliance. Here is just informational, uh, back in, and for those, uh, council who probably weren't here then, in May of nineteen, there was a study that went out, that was contracted by Development Services to look at our development fees, and the study indicated that we were about forty percent behind in market. That was in twenty nineteen. And after, of course, a lot of diligence and work, on September seventh of twenty-one, the council approved unanimously to adopt an ordinance that raised our fees, uh, over the next four years, and in year five and thereafter, we go to CCI, Construction Cost Index, and as, and that's what you see here. We are in twenty-three, twenty-four, which is the third year of this overall, overall plan. Uh, what we do, and what we always do, as you know, the third Friday of every month, we talk to the development community, and really, we talk to anyone who comes to our Development Task Force meeting about many things, and we've mentioned this. We've also engaged the Coastal Bend group individually about, uh, our fee increases, so that they are aware. And, and as far as we know, there have been, obviously, no clamoring or pushback and that kind of thing. But again, for those who may not remember, what does this fee do? As you know, we, I talked about, we launched N4. Well, there are still phases of N4 that we need to do. We need to bring other departments onto that platform, uh, like FIRE, like Public Works, like Parks, like CCW. Some of them are on, but we need to enhance their ability, and that's a cost to do that. In addition, we need to buy licenses, because we can engage in Peter Collins' support it, we can also bring online, uh, the county AEP, text dot, right? But we have to, you know, pay for that, and I think it's, creates a better customer experience, so we don't mind doing that. Uh, of course, in terms of increasing our fees and our professionalism, it allows us to recruit, retain and develop staff. Uh, we can buy the state of the art, the best state-of-the-art equipment to do what we do in our business, because our business constantly changes in terms of devices and equipment. And of course, as always, as we're, as Councilman Hernandez was talking about, it also allows us to fund this remodel. Which brings me to my last point, uh, to cut to the chase, because I know we've got a very busy schedule in Ju, June, a year ago, and I can't believe it's been that long, council approved the design contract with GANAC to, to design our building, our remodel and our addition. Ultimately, the GANAC submitted, uh, the end of last, at the end of this June, uh, a thirty percent design and an opinion of probable cost, and that cost is about nine point five million dollars, which, if you look at our numbers here, we are about, you know, two point eight or so away from, from, uh, meeting that cost, right? And, and ultimately, this is where we are. As I said, in twenty-three, we transferred, transferred five point nine to the CIP. We want to transfer another one point nine, uh, which gets us around seven point eight. Uh, GANAC's opinion of probable cost is about nine point five. Project engineering reimbursement, that's not out, outside, that's internal, that's the cost for engineering services to manage our project, which puts us around ten point six. Uh, and that leaves us a deficit of about two point eight. We've been talking to the city manager to see, uh, how we can mitigate that, and of course, we will use, of course, additional fund balance as the buckets populate to help, uh, bridge this gap or mitigate that gap. But this is kind of what we're looking at, and hopefully, we'll, you know, have a way forward shortly in, in, in bridging this gap. One thing I wanted to say before I end my presentation is, the marquee thing of this remodel is the community room that you see there in the upper left. Uh, the community room, uh, gives us another quality Class A meeting space in District One. As in other departments, uh, other cities, planning commission can meet there, landmark commission, BSB, CTAB, uh, the CAC meetings could be there, and any public meeting that you would want, not just in District One, but, or any of the districts. It's just another quality meeting space. So, it's something that we're, we're wanting to push forward, and as you know, as text dot said at our last council meeting, the bridge over Leopard, uh, the bridge on Leopard will be completed roughly in October, November. As you know, they're working on Leopard Street in front of our building, all the way to the, uh, all the way to the, uh, I wanted to say, the building that we're going to locate to, I can't remember the name of it. What is it? Oh, Value Bank, yes, thank you very much. So, this will be a great addition on, uh, on the new, newly updated Leopard Street. Uh, it's, it's a contemporary design, it, it'll just be great for the city. It'll, it'll just say a lot of things about the city in this generation, but in several generations to come. So, I hope you guys continue to support that and, uh, bring that to fruition. And on that, I end my presentation, and I stand by for any questions.
Councilman Barera.
Okay, so then, based on, so, I'm on, I guess it's page two thirteen of, uh, the budget that we have online, and I guess that's...
So tell me what, what you're looking at, so I can...
I'm, I'm looking at the Development Services Fund summary. It's not on your deal.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I said, did I say Chinga? Anyway, sorry, my dad came out. Today's his birthday. Uh, anyway, um...
Happy birthday to your dad.
Yeah, to my dad. Um, anyway, um, so, I, 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 I hope somebody's, uh, somebody sends this to you, Gil. I have to agree with Councilman Hernandez. Never talk to me about when people say that. So, the, the, I guess that's the whole thing with the deficit spending that I'm looking at, because the budget that we had for twenty-two, twenty-three, in expenditures was eight point, eighteen, three million. And then the revenue was nine, five. And this, and we ended up, we're going to end up with nine, three is our projection, and then we, we spent sixteen, eight. So, you know, clarify for me, what's, what's internal service allocations? And maybe Eddie might as well come up. I mean, it's, you, you tell me.
Uh, Councilman, that's healthcare costs, legal services...
Okay.
Budget costs, um, insurance costs...
IT.
IT.
Yeah.
IT is a big one.
Okay, 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 I got you, I got you.
Workers' comp, property insurance for the building.
Now, so, but how much did we expend then for, um, how much have we expended? I mean, um, for the prior year? Because that's where we sit on the budget. So estimated is what we're going to have. So that year, that, the same thing, we, it says original budget, actuals, eight point four, I, I guess that's the whole thing. We've gone from, uh, actual expenditures is twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, eight point four million, and then, all of a sudden, now, we're jumping up, um, ten million dollars in expenditures, or budget. I, I, maybe I missed something from last year, I obviously had a few beverages since then.
Sorry.
Because we're, we're, that's where I'm confused on the, the, with the intermingling of the building.
So the, the delta between the budget being twelve point four, or whatever, whatever it is in the book, um, and the revenue is all one-time cost? So we're doing the building remodel. Over the past two years, we've transferred or spent with design and engineering cost that nine million dollars that was our fund balance. We've also bought new vehicles to get rid of old vehicles, to get more efficient vehicles in. So we've used those fund balances that we had to make us more efficient and do the building remodel.
So, so then, why wouldn't that be part of the capital expenditures? It's in the operating expenses.
The building, the building, because it's a transfer to CIP, so until we actually sign the contract, it's an operating transfer. So we're transferring it to CIP funds to hold it there.
The capital budget, yeah, goes to the capital budget.
But yet, okay, so I can see, I'm, I'm really more confused. Uh, so we're, we're transferring, we're transferring CIP monies, and we're maintaining it in an operating budget, but yet, we don't show it here on the, on the, I guess I'd like to see maybe the fund balances over the, when we started doing this?
Sure.
Because, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm super confused. I'm just looking here in twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and I'm Joe Public. You know, we had revenue of nine, almost, you know, ten million dollars, and then we had expenses of eight point four, and now, all of a sudden, you know, we're budgeting all these expenditures, and, um, and, and then, at the end of this year, we're going to have a fund balance of, I mean, what, what, what... And, and then at the end of this year, we're going to have a fund balance of, I mean, what was the fund balance, Gil, before? I mean, the thing is, I'm having to go back and forth.
Hundred and eighteen thousand.
No, 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 but before, before the end, at the beginning of the year.
Beginning of the year.
Two point six.
Two point six. So see, so how much are we, we're, we're, is there a way for you to explain?
Absolutely. I can actually pull out all the one times and show you what it would have been without the one-time expenditures this year. So you can see revenue versus one, versus recurring budget.
Yeah, that would provide a lot of clarification because all of a sudden, you know, you're, you're looking at this to say, hey, you know, we spent another eight million dollars, or we budgeted another eight million dollars and we're only, we're only bringing in nine point five. And it looks like it's, we're going to do the same thing this year. And, and then, you know, how, and this is more for Al, thank you for that. How are we measuring, you know, I've been getting into this thing, I've been really getting frustrated. Michael heard about it, Michael Rodriguez heard a lot about it yesterday from me, is we, we, we look at the market, you know? And as I'm talking to other colleagues around the state, what does that mean? You know, if we're all doing a horrible job, we're going to meet somewhere in the middle, then you know what? We're not the worst, you know? What is it? So that's what I'm thinking. You know, Corpus Christi used to have an identity, identity crisis where we always compared ourselves to San Antonio. Now we got all you guys from San Antonio and we're still having problems. So, so I guess that's my thing. How, is there a way to measure our efficiencies and deficiencies? And, and I'm just a layman. That's one reason why I come up with the whole deal about the permitting, what's the process? So how are we measuring our efficiencies, like, you know, a cost per permit or a cost for associated? You know, what do we know? And on the health side, we look at it as a P E P M. And then we compare it to medical inflation. So how do we determine that we are being the most efficient? Other than, well, what are they doing in Houston? What are they doing in San Antonio? What are they doing in Arlington? Is there some sort of process that way? That's where the challenge I have. If you need the money, if you need more money for, to raise fees, okay. But how do we validate that other than this is the fee that they charge down the road?
Very good question, a very good question. How do we take the temperature of how our operation is functioning? We can only do that currently with commentary, good or bad, right? Commentary, I'm not just yours, I'm just saying the community in general, right? And in recent, recently, there have been, and I'm sure all of you are aware, there have been a lot of negative commentary about how Development Services is functioning, right? But, but I've come before you, even last year at this time, there were, there was commentary from you about, hey, you guys are doing great. However, there's always commentary, there'll always be negative commentary because we are in essence, the third rail in how the city develops, right? We stand between regulatory and code compliance and issuance of certificate of occupancy. And in between, there's frustration, there's angst, there's a lot of ugliness, right? And with all of that said, no matter what you've heard or what you've read, we, I mean, you know us, right? Mike Dice, myself, Nina, we try to facilitate, right?
Oh, of course, of course. I'm not denying that.
I understand. And so are there efficiencies and we make them every day? Are there deficiencies? Of course they are. But how we've mitigated that or how L Raymond has chose to mitigate that is through training and development, right? So that, I showed a slide here about getting certifications for the code enforcement group. Certifications do a lot of things. Basically, so when someone's yelling at you, you don't know what you're doing, you're idiots, morons, whatever. Well, not that I'm going to hit you across the head with my certification, but it basically says, hey, I know this trade. I know what I'm doing, I know what I'm regulating and, and you've got to, you have to comply, right? You mentioned something about, gosh, you said, you used the word about, gosh, it escapes me.
Qualified officials, professionals for discretion.
Yeah, discretion is the word you use, right? And, and that's for myself, that's Dice, that's Nina. Staff calls it like it is. Is it a strike or a ball or you call it like it is? And then we use our discretion based on the bigger picture to say, yes, no, maybe so. And we do that every day, right? It's hard to, it's hard to quantify or point to any one thing, sir. But you know us, I mean, you used to call me often, but you call Mike and others often. And we, we get into the game and we try to make development happen here, right? It's not always successful. People don't always pat us on the back and say, you're doing a great job. As a matter of fact, it's always the opposite, right? But, but we teflon up and it's just, it's just part of the business of Development Services, right? In, in any city, and you mentioned San Antonio or Houston or Dallas, in any city because we stand between somebody opening their business and, and that's always very critical.
I, 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 you know, I'm not, I'm not denying that people work hard. I'm not denying that everybody's trying their hardest. But my thing is, is that once again, how are we measuring our efficiency and our deficiencies? That we can continue to, as Covey says, sharpen the saw, you know, what is it? You know, it's like George Carlin says, anybody, anybody that drives faster than you is a madman, a maniac. Anybody drives slower than you is an idiot. You know, it's all relative and that's the whole thing. But the way that we figure that out is we know what the speed limit is, right? We know what the speed limit is. So that's how you're, that's the, that's the deal of measurement. Then how are we measuring our efficiencies and deficiencies? You know, Ricardo Sanchez, old CEO of the RTA, he used to have this saying, we got to run all the traps because we're going to have to make sure that this, there's a, there's going to be a problem on this deal. We're going to run all the traps first. And he had a system of measuring. And I see what you have here coming up. It's a performance measure, but it's that, you know, how, how is it that do we know? You know, I don't know if you could say, this is the number of permits that we issued and this was the fee and this is the cost associated that it costs us to be able to issue a permit. Because I tell you what, let's say, for example, I submitted a set of plans, okay? And I'm, I don't know what I'm doing and then it gets denied, right? Okay, so then it costs me time and money. It also costs us time and money to be able to do that. And the more often that we get that, the less, the, the traffic jam that we have. I deal with the same thing in underwriting. We want it to be perfect so that way the under, because what happens, we send something to the underwriter and then all of a sudden now, and we didn't do all our due diligence, and then it just goes back into the pile. You know, back into the pile until they get to it again. And, and you know, I get frustrated when I have to deal with that, particularly because I have to deal with, I, I have to deal with specific deadlines and that's the thing I'm saying. That's how we measure our effectiveness. How, how, how many of the mistakes were ours as a result of that? And then, and then we get to know underwriters. I mean, that's the thing, I'm trying to make it relative to my business, but I can measure efficiencies and deficiencies in my business because deficiencies cost me money. And they also cost my, they could cost my clients money. So I'm just trying to get my arms around this now. And I'm going to probably say that throughout the budget, how are we measuring efficiencies and deficiencies? And I'm, and candidly, I'm not hearing, I'm hearing that we're just using this market approach. Well, what's the turnaround in another community? Anyway, so just, just food for thought. Thank you. You've answered my question.
Understood.
Okay, Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you. Okay, Al, before I beat up on you. The, I want to say that four and a half years ago, when I got here, Development Services was the number one issue for us as a council. You've done yeoman's work and you have improved your, this department to where it is not our number one priority. I don't think it's in our top ten anymore. Does not say that there's not any issues, but I want to thank you for the work that you've done there, okay? So put that and say that I believe that you have done a fine job. Okay, with regards to this building, well, I'm sorry, the remodeling of your building. I want to kind of understand because you have several different numbers here with regards to the CIP. In last year's CIP, you had seven, you had the total expense cost being seven point one million. Seven, seven million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-eight. In this year's proposed CIP, you have eight million, four hundred and ninety, eight hundred and fifty-one. But in your presentation, you have ten million, six hundred and thirty-five, two hundred and seventy-one dollars. So there's disparity in, in what's happening with the remodel, with how much this is actually going to cost based on what's proposed in the CIP versus what you're doing. And I commend you for paying this out of operating budget and not asking for certificates of obligation.
That's one of the options for the gap, the two point eight million.
That's where I was going. Okay, but, you know, I think you may need to go back to your architect, which I know that wasn't your choice, that wasn't your preference. Go back to your architect and see if you can do some value engineering here to see if we can reduce that expenditure because this is, you know, this is continuing to go up and up and up. And, you know, I'd rather see if we can reduce the cost as opposed to go through certificates of obligation to fill the gap, okay?
Understood. And I, I want to make a statement here. The architect wasn't my cost, but they've been great to work with, right? They, they're very responsive and they've produced great layouts, right? However, and I just wanted to make that statement, but in general, costs have continued to go up since, since the fallout, right? And crazy or not, things are just running away from us. So what was, say, one dollar on Monday is now, you know, ten dollars on, on Friday. And that's, that's something that's going to continue. And granted, the numbers we're dealing with are only thirty percent, we only at the thirty percent review mark. Sixty percent is due here in the middle of, of this month, right? So, and I, do I expect the costs to go up once, once it gets more, once they dive in and provide more detail? Of course I do, right? So will it be, will my deficit be two point eight, you know, tomorrow? Probably not. It was probably going to be a little more than that, right? So yes, we can do value engineering as always. And I'm sure any good engineer and architect tries to, you know, get the cost down to where it needs to be. But right now, just the sheer rate of how things are going, the supply chain issues, which are still a real thing here, is just, you know, this is the best we can do from a estimating standpoint. But when we get to, and hopefully we'll bring this before council, before the end of the calendar year or contract that says, okay, here's a Development Services renovation and addition project and that number could be scary.
And councilman, thank you for highlighting the differences in the numbers. So, and when we did the capital budget, when we produced that budget a few weeks ago, we didn't have the thirty percent estimate. So that was a snapshot of the cost at the time. This is, you can see on the slide here, it says remodel update. This is the most current with the thirty percent update. And so that's why there's that difference of about two point eight million compared to the capital budget document that you all were given.
Okay.
In this presentation today, it's because we, GANAC gave us the thirty percent design. At this point, now we can, we have that number.
Okay, I would have that conversation with the architect to see if we can reduce some of that.
With all our projects, we do look to value engineers. That's something we'll do as the sixty and ninety percent.
Okay. Question on the IT, you had an N four upgrade. Where are you, where are you with that?
We launched the project on June fifth of this year.
And it's all, no issues, everything's?
Oh, there are always issues and we've had issues constantly. But, and for all of you to know, the modernization that we have now is unprecedented, right? Which you never had before, right? Where someone could be in New York or California or, you know, on Mars and do business with us, right? And we've never been to that point before. So even with the challenges that may have come, the new N four upgrade, DigiPlan, which is how we review documents or mark them up. Rhythm is the new portal where citizens can, can do their thing. And we often look at what they look at to make sure that it is easier. It is, it's intuitive for everyone to kind of understand. And of course, now with Govolution, we can post what's due and you can pay online with what's due. So all of that's great, but that was the first phase and there are several phases. That's why I said here, there are other things that we need to do going forward. The Spectrum Mobile app, bringing other departments online, those kind of things. And also bringing outside agencies like AEP, the county, Tech Dot online because it just makes it easier for, it improves the customer's experience, not necessarily ours. But the customer can go to one place and get, get everything they want. And I think that's ultimately our goal.
And the reason I ask that is because I know your budget for the IT allocation went down this year. So is it for the coming budget, is that expectation to continue to go down as this upgrade is complete?
I, I can't comment on that.
Okay, I'll ask Peter Collins, Peter Collins. The last thing I want to ask is, it has to do with code enforcement. We asked the municipal court folks about the adjudication of their cases. They said they had twelve thousand or a hundred and twenty, was it a hundred and twelve thousand? What was it? The cases closed, but they didn't have the breakout with how much, how many were adjudicated and how many were dismissed. So with your code enforcement, in the total citations you have, how many have been adjudicated and how many were dismissed or not?
So you're talking about the fifty-one thousand?
Right. I want to know what the efficiency is of our code enforcement officers that are going out and making citations and how many actually get adjudicated versus dismissed.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to get back to you on that, sir. I don't, I, that was something we didn't prepare for, for this presentation, so I'll have to get back to you.
Okay, I, I understand that, but, you know, I, what I want to make sure is that we're not sending out our code enforcement officers and writing citations and then nothing happens, right? I want to understand what the efficiency is, if they were actually being effective as code enforcement or not.
Understood.
And that, that doesn't just apply to code enforcement, it also applies to municipal court and our prosecutor's office as well through legal, Miles. So I want to understand that whole picture of what, of what, you know, if we're being effective or not, okay? Thank you.
Councilman Suckley.
Thank you, Mayor. One of my two questions was already Councilman Hernandez and Barrera about the deficit spending. So thanks for addressing that. But related to that, Al, is the, the fee services and the analysis you guys did back in two thousand and nineteen? Is, and you addressed it already, the escalating prices in the last several years. And so with us identifying forty percent deficient back in two thousand and nineteen, seems like we're sort of chasing a moving target probably. So I was curious if you guys are going to go back and get some new updated market numbers so that we could look at possibly, there may be a need for additional fee increases in two thousand and twenty-five and beyond.
That's a great, great question. And I'm, I'm trying to formulate in my mind something very respectful to say. It was very challenging getting to this point, right? So, and getting to this point allows me to do a lot of things. I can hire people at a different price point, which we couldn't do. And I want to elevate code enforcement at that same level too. And, and as we get to, to the next year, which is our last ten percent increase, then we'll evaluate the landscape. But yes, prices are running away from us, right? And, and you know, it's hard for us to get, right now, we have so many vacancies in our electrical, plumbing and mechanical because those guys are running to the, to the industrial field, the oil fields, because now that bell is ringing, right? And they just, they outpace us, they outpay us and we can't compete, right? And not that we should, right? However, but we need to know that we are on, at a level where we can fish in the Houston market or fish in the San Antonio market. And we're getting there, right? Not to beat them, not to be better than, but we can compete, right? And we can attract people to our city based on our competitive salaries, right? So we'll probably look at that at the end of our four-year, even before we go to CCI. But it's something we have to deal, deal with very cautiously because, you know, of just where we are overall, right? So.
Thank you.
Councilman Roy.
First of all, I want to also commend you in terms of the job that your staff and department and the things that you're proposing in terms of code enforcement to do in the future have done a stellar job. You know, everything is relevant. And one of the things that I just want, I have to make this statement because one of the things I want to remind people is that you don't operate in a vacuum. If you operated in a vacuum and you didn't have those external forces that were pushing on your, your daily model, then in terms of being able to evaluate your performance exactly, it would be a lot easier. However, case in point, you don't have the ability to control some of the things that are out there in terms of if you go out and you do an inspection and you see that there's an issue, you have to wait in terms of that subcontractor, contractor, whoever, developer to correct that deficiency in order to get back on track. So in my opinion, the way that you're evaluating efficiencies is accurate. How long does it take you from the time that there is an issue for you to respond? Because at that point in time, you lose control. You don't have any control of that. So for somebody to sit there, and even when we take a look at other cities, which I, I do believe. So for somebody to sit there, and even when we take a look at other cities, which I do believe, you have to set benchmarks, you got to compare it with something. And comparing yourself with another city or, you know, whatever, you know, I think it's appropriate. Because you have to be able to do that. Doesn't mean that you necessarily take 100% of that weight and follow it and say, okay, if we're doing two and a half day turnaround from the time that we were notified and San Antonio is doing five, we must be really doing a great job. You might be able to improve your internal process to get it down to two days. But my point is, is that we're chasing, this isn't the tail chasing the dog. And I just want to commend you guys to keep doing what you're doing. Because I think that a lot of those things will work themselves out. As far as the cost goes with this building and rehabbing this building, I think, again, I mentioned a couple of weeks ago about people looking at the big picture. If we were to go out and the city would have acquired that building instead of getting the building the way they got it, we're already ahead of the game in terms of money and the overall budget spending to have that building and utilize that building and the long-term use of that building in terms of the funds that we're using. My question is, at a point in the future, 2023, 24, it seems like you understand that your costs are going to go down again, and this was an outlier. Am I correct?
Yes, you are.
Okay, and I think that's important for the public to understand and people to understand that, yes, we're spending some money right now on this building to get it up, but what does that asset do for us? And what does it do overall? And what was the overall cost? Because the option to that was to build, to buy that building. And since that was my former corporate headquarters, I know what the cost of that would have been. So again, I commend you, and I just wanted to make comment on that, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, I wanted to echo some of the things that Councilman Hernandez said. I think, Al, the changes that have, we've all seen in the Development Services Department are just stellar. And you
Thank you, sir.
You deserve a lot of credit for that, and your staff does as well. So it's head and shoulders above where it was just four or five years ago. And I also wanted to echo what Councilman Hernandez said about the code enforcement cases and being able to break those down as to what actually is being issued and what the, I guess, the comment I would have is, what is the success rate of those citations and what are we doing? So first about the building, I think we need to look at value-added engineering. I supported the remodel of this building, and we started out talking about remodeling. Now we're having new construction, so I guess I wasn't aware we were going to do new construction. But Peter, I think as we go forward, when we bring back the numbers on this, we need to look at remodel versus new construction cost of what that actually is. I think that would be a good thing for us to look at. Your building and the CCPD building are two of the buildings, I think, of what city-owned properties, besides the convention center, that really need some upgrades, no doubt about that. And it's nice that we have that structure, and it's a good structure, and we can fix it up and use it for years. That's a great thing. So it's an investment in the future, and I understand that. But we just need to look at it and see what we can do with respect to getting the cost down a little bit. And I realize costs have gone up, no doubt about that. I see those when I, the guy who takes care of my yard has gone up twice in the last year, so it's everything. So when I met with you guys yesterday, I talked to you a lot about code enforcement. And I personally, that's been an issue for me, as everybody on this council will probably testify to. I think it's one of our most challenged departments. I was concerned about, when they moved it under your department, about whether a department is as busy as you are, whether that was going to be a challenge for you. But with our conversation yesterday, you've convinced me that you're up to the challenge. And we'll, I'll be here for one more budget, we'll see how that goes. But I think for me, and I brought this up to you yesterday, and Peter, I wanted you to know about this too. I think that one of the things that is most disappointing to me is that we don't have follow-up from code enforcement with respect to what they're doing. And so when the city manager, a council member, take four hours out of their day to ride around with code enforcement personnel and show them issues that they have, and then we never hear anything about what has happened on those, is something that we need to correct. So, and I know everybody at this DAS is sick and tired of hearing me compare us with the county, but I'm going to do it one more time at least. And that is county commissioner, and I really like the ideal of y'all splitting up the code enforcement to where you have somebody for each council district. I think that's a great ideal. And we had a similar thing at the county. And each month, the code enforcement department would send the respective commissioner for their precinct a report of what was happening with respect to code enforcement cases, citations, you know, basically a really nice complete report of everything happening in their respective precincts. And on a go-forward basis, maybe that's something we could look at. And we don't have to have a dissertation, you know, just a one-line report about what we're doing so that the respective council district members know what's going on in their district. And when people call and say, well, what about this? And they can say, well, we're addressing that, or we haven't.
Great point, Councilman, great point.
So, anyway, but I'm looking forward to the new changes, and I'm very hopeful that it's going to get much better. So I think that's all I had, and we'll wait to see what comes up on the building. Thank you.
I just want to, if I can, I want to share our conversation yesterday because Councilman Pusley was just really concerned, hey, you're taking on a challenge, and you already have a very challenging department. And I was really, I don't know, I guess I was telling my wife I was touched that he cared, because I guess he didn't want me to go down in flames. But I assured him that it makes logical sense because it's two sides, we're two sides of the same coin, right? And as I said earlier, one side deals with the built environment, the other side deals with the environment being built in their synergies there, and if you, if we enact certain efficiencies, it will improve. So a year from now, you know, if I'm still here, we'll have this conversation again. And hopefully you'll see a difference in the community without even Al Raymond or Dice or Tracy saying, hey, look at this. You'll just notice it because it will be a visual reality. So I take the challenge.
And Mr. Raymond, on that, I believe in that wholeheartedly. I think that, you know, what you have done and what you have begun to do is, it's a long, it's a process, and it doesn't happen overnight. There are many, many people who have said to me, wow, things have changed, things are changing. They have changed and they're changing. And it's growing pains because you're at the helm of that change, and that is not easy. So I commend you and commend you for your leadership, for what you're doing. You're not done. And I think your message today is, we are continuing to step forward, one day at a time. It is, there are certain parts of this that are painful, it isn't a perfect process. You take a lot of notes up there, and I love that, because you are listening to what we're saying. What we're saying doesn't mean it becomes rule or law. You know, we don't work, we're not development services professionals, but we certainly have an opinion. And I commend you for respecting that because that's very obvious. So, you know, as a small business owner, my, my goal and my priority was my customer. This was, you know, 20 years ago. And I remember saying, I was 24 years old, and I said, I'm going to set this up like a machine because it doesn't matter who's sitting behind the desk, right? The Allstate agent could be me, it could be whomever, but this is going to work the way I'm going to set it up. And because I knew I was going to pull back when I had a family and such. And that's exactly what I did. That's exactly what you just said. It shouldn't matter necessarily who's sitting behind the chair. The process has to be set up so that it's going to be successful no matter what. I see that you're doing that. So, and I appreciate all the questions because they're extremely valid, and so, and I love that you're taking all of that in. Thank you for that, and I can't wait because it's happening right now. Development services is, it has turned, you know, the tide has turned, and it's always about the leadership. We're not perfect, can we improve? Yes, and that's what you're working on. A couple of things, well, the customer service regarding code enforcement. I have to say, what Councilman Pusley just said is 100% valid, and it is one of the most basic foundations that should belong in every department. And that is follow-through and just a report of what's happening, right? A basic report of what's happening because people just want to be heard, number one. And number two, the council just wants to know, right? Well, where are we? Give us a little bit of something, and if there is that follow-up, then, you know, things just seem to get better. The biggest complaint for me that people, you know, send to me is, there's no response. I didn't get a call back, or I didn't get the email, whatever, response, or nothing happened. So it's the response back, even if it's just, you know, got it, we hear you, we're on it, we'll be back. We'll let you know how this goes. The second thing I brought up to Peter because I saw a, I think it was yesterday, the article or news interview? Yeah, on the ombudsman, or woman. So tell us a little bit about that because that was news to me in a positive way.
Sure, I'd be happy to, you know, my boss, Steve, said to me, you didn't even tell council or, I said, but that's an internal operation. I just assumed it's an internal operation, and they would see the results of it, but, sorry, Steve. But as, you know, as the business that we are in, there's always, as I said earlier, complaints. Just people who are dissatisfied, and I said, okay, what we'll do, we'll do two things, right? We will, we'll do several things, but the primary things we'll do, we'll set someone up as the ombudsman or woman. And that's someone who will, anyone can go to and say, hey, this is not working. And that person helps facilitate where they are to where they need to be. So I've encouraged Peter and Steve and others, hey, when people call and say, development services sucks or whatever, have you talked to Al or Yvette or Mike Dice or Nina? Force them down first, give us a chance to fail, and then go to Peter, right? So what Yvette's role is, is she's the ombudswoman who runs interference, right? She looks at the process, and as Councilman Barrera is saying, is, hey, she facilitates from that point, right? She has discretion to say, hey, Dice is incorrect, or Al, do you think this is needed or whatever? And it helps projects move forward. It helps the person who's not used to the process engage with someone to help them get through the process. The other thing we did is that we, and even though I think we did a fair amount of engaging the public, but we have someone who is on point to do that, and that's Joanne Salinas. She is our, and I called it a PIO, and Steve said, hey, you might want to find another name. And I, we did find another name, I'm blanking out right now, but she just engages, right? Engages the community, engages you. And when we get through the budget process, as you guys were saying, we're going to reach out to each council district and those at large to have these meetings to introduce the new code enforcement team in those areas, and hey, here's your point of contact, here's your team, so that we just engage more, we want to connect more, right? And that's kind of some of the changes we make that I think are great. And when I was talking to Michael Gibson, and we're sharing it with him, he goes, whoa, can I talk to this person now? And I go, well, sure. And so that's how he ran the story. But we're just trying, we're always looking to continuously improve what we do, right? Because architects, engineers, those people who are in the business basically kind of understand it, but the majority of the 300,000 or so, it's a scary process, and it's really not that scary. So Yvette Wallace, Joanne Salinas, they help bridge the gap to take something that's really, oh, they don't really know, and kind of help turn it into a reality.
And Joanne, what was her?
Salinas. She's assistant to the director, basically.
But she's going to assist?
Thank you, Mike Dice, community relations coordinator.
There you go, okay, great, okay, thank you. I think that's all the questions, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We're going to have Robert Dodd, our Parks Director, and his team now present the Parks Budget. Thank you, Al, and your team.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I'm Robert Dodd, I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation. This morning, I'll be presenting you the FY '24 proposed budget for our department. Our mission statement is to manage the park system and offer recreational, social and cultural activities to residents and provide a safe and inviting recreational commercial venues for the boating public, including visitors. Parks and Recreation Department maintains a variety of facilities, including recreation centers, pools, gyms, athletic fields, tennis courts and golf courses. They provide, they're provided to enrich the quality of our city residents and visitors. We manage seven pools and six splash pads. Most of our pools are outdoor recreational pools. The Collier Pool is a heated pool that operates year-round. The aquatics programming includes swim lessons, water aerobics, splash parties, aqua jogging, and junior lifeguard certification. This is a map of our location of splash pads and pools. Some more about the Parks and Recreation Department. The department operates and manages a number of recreation and senior centers where we offer recreational programs and services. We have eight senior centers serving the needs of our senior population. Our centers offer a variety of programs and activities designed to meet social, recreational and health and nutritional needs of our senior adults. Activities include aerobics, table tennis, volleyball and senior Olympics. Through our elderly nutrition program, we provide meals at our senior centers and deliver meals to our homebound seniors. Our senior companion program allows recruitment of senior volunteers to provide assistance with daily tasks and provide companionship for homebound and disabled seniors. And lastly, our retired volunteer program. Staff matches volunteers of interest where we fill roles at nonprofit agencies and do such things as clerical work, and they'll work at gift shops and so forth. We operate four recreation centers through the city, which offers fun activities and programs promoting character development, leadership, education, and health for our youth ages 6 to 16. Our recreation centers are open campus centers where our programs and activities are provided in a supervised environment. Programming activities include indoor and outdoor sports and play, arts and crafts, tournaments, guest speakers and field trips. Also recreational, recreation centers host a variety of events, including dances, holiday events, cooking demonstrations and health awareness. This is a map of our recreation and senior centers and districts. Parks and Recreation maintains two bayfront beaches, North Beach and McGee Beach. We, and designated stretches of the Gulf Beach. Beach operations staff host a variety of events throughout the year. One important one is the Catch a Special Thrill fishing event, which volunteers, where volunteers take local kids, 5 to 18, with special needs fishing at the Hatchery in Flower Bluff. We also maintain and operate the Oso Bay Wetlands Preserve and Learning Center, which is 162-acre nature preserve with two miles of nature viewing trails. The preserve offers many outdoor recreational activities, including wetland workshops, junior wildlife gardeners. And so far this year, there's over 15,000 visitors at our learning center. 61,000 trail visits, and we serve, and we have served almost 6,000 visitors at these, for these programs. Beach parking permits are sold at various locations through the city and beach. This year, we estimate we'll sell 283,000 permits. Year-to-date, our beach lifeguards have almost 30 water rescues, close to 8,000 preventables, and 15,000 contacts. close to 8,000 preventables, and 15,000 contacts out at our beaches.
I'm sorry, Robert, and the, can you go back? The contacts, what does that entail?
Context is just, uh, public interaction with somebody out at the beach.
Over anything?
Over anything. A preventable might be, you know, when there's a, a flag warning, and somebody goes out too deep, or, you know, we might go out there, and those would be preventables. Jellyfish, stay away from them, or whatever.
Thank you.
Uh, the Marina leases, uh, and maintains 500 wet slips, uh, for pleasure and commercial vessels. Amenities at the boat, at the boaters include, uh, for the boaters include, uh, field, uh, fuel dock, uh, free sanitary pump-out station, private showers and restrooms, laundry facilities, public boat ramps, dry storage, and boat, board boat racks. Uh, special work areas provided where tenants can perform maintenance on their boats. There's also a, uh, a boat, uh, repair facility, which has a 25-ton travel lift, uh, for contracted, uh, repairs. And the Marina, uh, staff provides 24-hour service. Our, uh, there's maps of our beaches and our marina. The department inventory includes two tennis centers and two golf courses, which are privately operated. Tennis is a major recreation activity, and at the HEB, uh, Tennis Center, it's operated by Sweet Spot Tennis, and Al Cruz Tennis Center is operated by Love Tennis and Education. Um, also at Al Cruz, there's 10 pickleball courts that are heavily used. Uh, the two golf courses are privately managed by Foresight Golf. This is a map of our athletic facilities, including tennis centers and golf courses.
What, wait, can you go back? So we've got one. I'm sorry, this is, are golf courses or where?
Golf courses would be, uh, in the legend there would be a.
In districts three and four?
Three and four.
Three and four. And then tennis is where?
District, uh, three, I believe, HEB, and Al Cruz is District, District One, One and Two.
Which one's in One?
Al Cruz.
Oh, Al Cruz, it's in One.
Right, and HEB is?
HEB's in?
Two, District Two.
In Two, so we only have One and Two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I can point out, there's none in District Five.
Or Four.
Or District One.
Three. Okay.
Our park system includes 194 parks, which includes regional, community, neighborhood, and niche parks. Uh, our parks include multiple amenities, including playgrounds, restrooms, shaded picnic tables, uh, benches, grills, pavilions, basketball courts, hiking bike trails, uh, tennis courts. Uh, there's 125 parks that have, uh, playground units. Um, according to the master plan, the majority of our residential areas are within a three-mile service area of a community or a regional park. This is a map of our park and 194 marked out there. Our organization, uh, the department is divided into three, uh, primary functions, uh, the administration, operations, and programming and recreation. Uh, our, our organization structure includes two assistant directors, a special project manager, and a finance manager. Uh, Kevin Johnson is our assistant director of operation, and he oversees beach and park operations and the marina. Uh, Tyler Florence, assistant director of programming and oversees community and recreation services. A special project manager oversees the department projects, and the financial manager oversees administration.
Mayor, could I stop?
Yeah.
Just for one second. Peter, with respect to these organizational charts, and I really appreciate these, I really do, but I would like to see names associated with those positions on, some of, most of the ones we've seen before now have that, but this one doesn't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, yes, sir. Our FY23 achievements, though there were many, um, some of Salinas Park is a community regional park, has a new seven-foot wide concrete walking trail that was installed, along with the, uh, lighting along the trail, and it has five exercise stations, including three fitness equipment units per station. Our first annuals, uh, this year, we ha- held our first annual Coastal Comida Fest and Endurance Fest. Uh, the Coastal Comida Fest held in July was held at, uh, the Great Lawn at Waters Edge Park. Uh, it was a free admission event, attracting 2,500, uh, residents and visitors. It featured local trucks, local musicians, and, uh, all, yeah, all, all were local artists.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I think we have a question. Councilman Roy?
I, I wanted to go back to the personnel, because, um, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, but on the proposed budget, it looks to me like the two areas that, um, your expenditures have increased is your personnel. And I'm wondering, I, I would like to know, I know that, is that a projection because of the, um, the swimming pool and the staffing that it's going to take to operate that? And then I noticed there is a increase in your internal service allocations, but I, I was just, if you could make comment on that?
Uh, when I get there, is that good, sir?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
As long as you make, yeah, just touch base on that.
And if, if you have any other, when we get there, I'll make sure that I answer that. That's, uh, Salinas Park, I'm sorry, or our first annuals. So Comida Fest had 2,500 residents and visitors visiting. Our Endurance Fest was a, a three-day fitness event, uh, which brought in an estimated 3,000 attendees, and from various, uh, Texas locations as well as Oklahoma. It included a 5K glow run, a marathon, a cycling tour, and then it ended with an award ceremony. A third accomplishment is, in November, the voters, uh, approved a public pool facility at Bill Witt Park. Uh, to date, we have successfully completed the design, plan, and construction contracts. Uh, the estimated construction completion date is May of 2024. Um, it will include a competition ten-lap pool, ten-lane lap pool, a leisure pool, and, um, children's play unit as well, and it will also include 130-plus, uh, parking spots. Our fourth accomplishment is our North Padre Island Equipment Storage Facility. This year saw the completion of the North Padre Island Beach Storage Facility. Uh, this facility was needed to, uh, storing our equipment out at North Beach, or out, out at the beach, Gulf Beach is, um, excuse me. Uh, it includes, uh, we house our mo- house, our, uh, mo- motor graders, our front-end loaders, our water trucks, and yard, uh, yard graders, and other equipment out there at, out at the beach. Performance measures, our project, projected FY24 target performance measures are acres of parks, uh, mode, uh, 31,000. This is in line with our FY23 target of 31,360. Number of beach permits sold is 285,000, which is slightly exceeds last year's target of 283,000. Uh, number of program registrations is 35,000, which is an increase of 8,000 from last year's 27,000. And number of program visits, uh, is at 54,000, and an increase of FY23 target of 45,000. Our proposed budget, FY24 pro- proposed budget, Parks and Recreation proposed FY24 budget is 41.4 million. This includes five funds, a general fund, a special revenue fund, an enterprise fund, a park development fund, and a grant fund. All funds budgets are decreased, except for the grant fund, which had an increase in the elderly nutrition program. The large decrease in overall budget for both general fund and special revenue fund is due to some one-time FY23 budget initiatives. Uh, our grant funds include seven grants, uh, four which are, provide service to our senior community, two for our youth and development and nutrition, and one is our Beat the Heat grant. Uh, general fund had a net loss of positions, which came from the decrease of positions from the afterhour kit power, and an increase for the Bill Witt Aquatic Center and Athletic Field Business Program. The proposed general fund budget of 24.5 million is funded as follows. 18.8 million from the general resources, 1 million from beach parking permits, and 2.3 million from the program fees and facility rentals. 2.4 are the inter-fund charges. Forty percent, 46% of our operating budget is personnel cost, uh, 24% is operating costs, 3% is capital outlay, 23% is allocations, and 4% is transfers to CIP. This year's general fund budget has 13 park tech positions to support a Phase One of the Athletic Field Business Program change at Greenwood, Salinas, and Bill Witt, which includes 100% maintenance and management of city-owned sports complexes. The proposed special revenues budget is 12 million and is funded as follows. 3.69 from the hot fund, uh, 4.4 from the shot, 200,000 from the visitor facility fund, and 3.5 million from the park development fund. This budget is spent equally, almost 50% from parks and, uh, beaches. Uh, this year's proposed budget adds almost 600,000 in FY24 budget initiatives, which we'll be covering in later slides. Our enterprise, enterprise fund, uh, includes Marina and Golf. The proposed FY24 expenditure for the Marina Fund is 2.3 million, and the Golf Fund proposed expenditures is 300,000. As part of our budget process, we met with our advisory committees, uh, to address community priorities. Uh, our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee provided a list of several budget priorities. Uh, our Marina Advisor Committee was satisfied with the current ongoing CIP Marina projects and did not provide any budget recommendations.
Councilman Pusley?
Okay, here, here's where I want to interject. And, and Robert, some of this comment doesn't apply to you because you've only been here a short time, but, um, Peter, I'm, I'm extremely disappointed that we haven't had more information forthcoming to the council about what's going on at the Marina. I know we're fixing boat slips, but I have been saying for two and a half years now that we, that our Marina, we're not taking advantage of what we have there. It's a golden opportunity. Heather and I were having this conversation, uh, to separate people from their money and, and, and bring it into the city of Corpus Christi. So I, I'm extremely disappointed that our advisory committee came up with no recommendations on anything to do. I just think that, it, I can't believe that we have an advisory committee that doesn't see one thing down there, other than what's going on that needs to be changed or improved. And so I think we need to challenge our advisory committee, uh, to, to take a closer look and.
I'm sorry, Councilman, can I, let me just clarify what the, what Robert Dodd said, which is that they, they have no recommendations beyond the improvements in the capital budget? So they see the, they have reviewed the plans in the capital budget, which?
Well, I understand that, I, and, and, but the fact that they had nothing to, to add to that is just disappointing.
Okay, so the, so in the capital budget, we have $20 million ongoing right now to replace all the slips. And a big part, I know you're concerned, which is, what do we, how can we reprogram and improve it? And so what's going to help us do that is the master plan consultant that was just approved by council about two weeks ago. That was a, I think, a $300,000 consultant contract from one of the best consultants when it comes to marinas. That's going to be a big impetus, but I, I hear what you're saying. Uh, this committee is a newly formed one, uh, they do meet, we do engage them.
Yes, sir.
And honestly, that's been something, um, since I became mayor, that I've been having conversations on. That advisory board was one that also was somewhat purposely very focused on. Um, it's the newer one for the last two years, but again, that's all going to go back to a master plan. And that was never done, you know, I mean, that was never done, but it's never been done, and that's where it all begins, is, is through the master plan. Has it gone slowly? Yeah, but I can tell you, Councilman, because it's been a very, it's been a focus. It's just behind the scenes now, because we've got to get it, which, which we just did, to council, and then the fun starts.
Yeah, I just, I would just like to have more information on a regular basis about what we're doing there, what our plans are.
We can do that.
What, what kinds of things that we envision, if we've got this engineering firm. It seems like we hire engineering firms, and it's like a black hole. The money goes in there, and we never hear anything about it. Uh, the desalinization project is a perfect example. We hadn't heard anything in months about.
Oh, you will, yeah, it's coming, where, in fact, we just scheduled that for August, Councilman.
Anyway, I don't want to blabber that point.
Yes, sir, Councilman Pusley, we, today, actually, at four o'clock, if we get out of here before four, will be, uh, the, uh, our first kickoff meeting with the consultant. And it'll just be, you know, we're laying out when they're coming down, and
Okay.
you know, some community outreach and things like that, so today at four will be our first meeting.
Well, just tell them that you've got one council member who's extremely OCD and, and very concerned about the speed and process of this thing going forward. I think every day that we are not doing additional improvements at our Marina is another day that we're losing revenue to this city, so that taxpayers don't have to cover the lion's share of your budget.
Yes, sir.
That's, it's what, that's what it's all about. So I do want to go back, um, and, and again, Robert, this doesn't have anything to do with you, and if you'll go back to page 19, and I, I want to make an example here of something that's been a concern of mine for a very long time. If you look at this map and the other maps that you have, um, provided for us, and, and they were very good. I appreciate it, I'm a map kind of guy, so I really appreciate the fact that you put these in our, in your report. But if you look at, for example, the pools and splash pads, you can take a 50-cent piece and cover up where they all are in this city.
Yes, sir.
There's none in District One, and there's none in Flower Bluff. And if you go through these maps with respect to everything that's going on, with respect to parks, recreation, that's pretty well true across the board. And Peter, I think this is a systemic issue that has existed for a very long time, in the fact that the northwest area of this city and the Flower Bluff area of this city get overlooked, and, uh, I'm sorry. Well, you're taking care of that, you got a $10 million swimming pool, so. But if you look at the geographic area of District One as compared to some of these other districts, where we're putting multiple pools, multiple splash pads, multiple recreational facilities, and you look at the geographical area and size of District One, is just, there's no comparison. And I know we have Guth Park, and we're making some improvements there. We now, because we tore down the old water treatment plant, we now have an additional space at La Bonte, where we can do some things. But I just want to say, Peter, this is something that over the next few years needs to be adjusted.
Right, Councilman, I agree. So I made that a priority, uh, when Councilman Roy, when his first term, we met with the business and community members in that area.
Yep.
And I recognized it, and they told it to me, one of my first meetings up there, that we want City Hall to pay attention to us up here.
Yep.
That's why we've made significant improvements at West Guth Park. That's why now La Bonte Park is the biggest park in the city, uh, area-wise, has more acres than any park.
But there's nothing in it.
Well, it's one step at a time, right? So that water treatment plant's sat there since the, I guess, the 50s or something, or 40s, so, bacon. So, uh, one step at a time, the land looks great now, this programming of a million dollars in the bond program to lay out an initial plan of, of connectivity. But we, so it's going to take some time, but we, we know it's an important area. Uh, we know that, uh, we've, uh, this council has approved policy to incentivize housing development
Right.
for the, uh, growth corridor leading to the Centon Steel Plant. Uh, we want people to live in Calhoun, it has two great school districts.
Yep.
It has some real nice, uh, geographic features, uh, that other parts of the city might not necessarily have, like the Nuasis River.
Sure.
And a little bit of hill, hilliness to it, so, uh, little by little, we'll continue to, uh, give equity to that, that section of the town as well.
Okay, now Parker Park is, is run by the county, correct?
The pool is, sir, yes, sir.
The pool is.
Yes, sir.
They, they bought, they took over the pool, and I, here, a couple of months ago, I ran into Commissioner Chesney, and I think he'd like to sell it back to us, but we, we may want to.
Tried, yeah.
We, we may want to ask about that.
Well, we did, uh, back in April, and he said not only no, but almost HLLL no.
Really?
Because we feel that the nonprofit, we can see, not feel that the nonprofit struggles with operating the pool.
Yep.
They base their revenues off donations and admission, well, I guess not admission fees, but revenues from, uh, people that want to donate.
Well, that's interesting.
So that was an interesting move that the city did, uh, prior to me getting here, where they literally deeded out that pool and gave it to the county, so we don't even own the underlying, uh, area, the property.
Okay.
Uh, but it is in the, in the heart of a city park, the Ethel Flarley, which is one of the signature parks in Council District Four. So we're, we're. So we're, we're, we're open to taking it back over, to make sure, it does need some enhancements, according to our park staff. Needs some upgrades.
We might want to talk to Commissioner Chesney and the county judge about that again. That's, that's your area, I don't want to speak for you, County.
Yeah, no, no, this, I brought it up in April. We sort of edited that at that point, but we can always revisit it. But I, I don't mean to steal Commissioner Chesney's thunder, he may have mentioned to you, but I think some of his discretionary funds are going currently, again, to Parker Pool. So I think that group over there will have somebody to make some improvements, so I don't know how significant.
He made that comment before they, their appraisals came in, so it may be different now. They, they're having some severe budget struggles. So I, but I, and I don't want to belabor the point, I just want to make a point that this has been a systemic issue that I think has existed for a very long time. And I'm glad that you, Peter, recognize that. And we just need to keep informing the people of the northwest area that we haven't forgotten about them and that we're going to be doing some things in that area to help improve the people's access to parks, recreational facilities. There's no, there's several community gyms, if you will, for kids to have activities at, and we have nothing like that. We depend on the school districts out there to, to have the kindness of heart to open up their gyms and facilities to let the public utilize during non-school years and non-school functions. And they can do that to a certain extent, but they can't do it for everybody and everything.
I agree, Councilman, we have similar issues on the island, they have no community center as well. One thing, one thing Cal Island, the Anneville area will be getting is one, one of the first police substations.
Yes.
That was in the bond program, complete construction for it, so that'll bring.
We all love that ideal.
Yeah, that's going to be a great add, so that's, that's a good demonstration to say we're moving in that direction to bring better equity in District One.
And I think putting it in, in Guth Park is a brilliant ideal as well.
Yes, sir, save taxpayers money, and that's the epicenter of where the homes are, according to Chief Markle, so.
I'm, I'm done for now, so thank you. And, and Robert, again, I'm not hammering you because you, you weren't here when this all started.
You're good, yes, sir, thank you.
Peter, Peter, going back real quick before we move on, because we do have a couple of, of comments. Would you give us a, the timeline, I know we just awarded the contract on the master plan, but what that's going to look like? You know, the timeline moving forward, or Robert, whoever's in charge of that? And I know Jonathan Atwood is with us today, or, or with us now, so thanks for being here. But, but I also want to mention too, and, I mean, you know, I, I think we have to be careful, because I agree, and it's, you know, taking a while. But now that we have the contract awarded, you know, I guess to go in and do anything would be, we don't know what the master plan is going to. We, we know the process, it's going to have input from community, it's going to have obviously council input, it's, it's a whole long process. But to, to invest in something that we're not sure would go or not go, you know, would be, I mean, is that recommended? Because we want to see something down there, we talked about this.
Right, absolutely. What we do know and what we have in the budget that's funded is a new boater's facility.
Right.
That's funded in the budget, on the, on the L-head. The, the boat haulout facility that's rusting apart right now, this, it's under design right now for a brand new one. There's twenty million dollars in, in replacing a third of the slips in the piers. There's money in the budget to replace the people's T-head boardwalk. So this is significant investment in some of the known things. What we want the consultant to help us do is say of the area that isn't developed, what's best suited for there.
Well, and I think that's what we're talking about. We're talking about, you know, development on the land, and that's, that was the whole point, but I think that's where the master plan comes in.
Right, so we'll get you that timeline.
And I think in the interim, in the interim, Alyssa's done the temporary, you know, that, the norma urban park and all that, so that's.
Yeah, all that's great.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just an example, and look at the people who turned out for that deal.
Yeah.
You know, it's just a perfect example of, I think, a really lost opportunity for this city not to take advantage. And it's been a lost opportunity for years, y'all, y'all inherited this, and I, and I want to make that. But I think it'd be good, Mayor, to have Jonathan come up here at least on a quarterly basis and update us on what's going on, because I've only seen him, at least I can remember, once since I've been a councilman. Somebody asked me the other day about him, I said, I couldn't pick him out of a lineup.
Oh, yes, sir, stand up, Jonathan. Come on down, Jonathan. But you know, Peter, what's, what's very helpful, and I look through every agenda, is the type, the type B board. There are always engineering updates on all of the projects. And I go through that, and it's super helpful because it's updated, and it tells you exactly what's going on and where we are in the project. So maybe something like that would be.
We can, yeah, it's an important, it's a, it's a cultural location for us, and Jonathan's been a big part of turning it around. He has extensive experience in maritime business, prior.
There's some little things like that, Peter, that circulate, you know, in the mayor's office, in your office, and we don't see, and it would be very helpful.
Yeah.
Well, that's the type.
The type B is circulated to the entire, uh, at least it's done, I don't know if it's circulated like handed out, it's on the, the portal, what do you call it?
Yeah, because it's a public meeting. But, but to be clear, you know, Jonathan's going to sit here and tell us all the thirty million dollars, basically. But what we're really talking about, and you're doing, you're doing phenomenal work, because, and, and we, and, you know, we approved all of that, so it was great. But, but I know, but the councilman and what, what I'm talking about has nothing to do, you can't go create the master plan and say, let's put a popadose right here. I mean, you can't do that. I mean, that is, that is, what do you call that? That's, that's a different kind of development and, and investment that comes a different way, which is what we're doing. So just to make that clear.
Councilman Pusley, will I add something to the city manager report? I think we have some opportunity, some time.
Yes.
Either this coming Tuesday or the next council meeting, and we'll have Jonathan in about fifteen minutes run through all the improvements and investment. There's some significant financial investment happening there, and we can also at the same time share the master plan.
It goes hand in hand with what we're doing with the DMD and all that.
Absolutely.
It, it's, it's all of us tied together. Did we get the sunken boat out of the?
We did, yes, sir. Jonathan, of course, for some marine managers. Actually, I just finished the kickoff meeting for the docks. So we were working with Cal and Marine to get all that scheduled and planned, so then I ran up here right afterwards, but.
The twenty million dollar dock and pier replacement project, Cal and Marine.
No, that's, that's huge, and I realize that.
And we did get the sunken boat taken care of, and we're moving forward, we're still working on fuel station, that's a hot topic. And one of the big issues there is just coming up with a plan that is sustainable for the Marina and to move that forward. And I think the master plan will also help us out with that, because some, something else we've looked at is just the entire layout of the Marina, you know. Parking is a big deal, figuring out where to place, future development's a big deal. We have over five hundred slips in the Marina, and something I continually point out to many different people is if I've got two hundred slips on a landmass, we need to have parking for those, those slips as well. And I think the master plan is really going to help us with that. But all these projects moving forward, the advisory committee is very pleased. You know, they see the projects that we have, the projects that are going. Took us a year and a half to get the permit for the docks, which was a big delay, I was hoping to have that moved forward much faster. But they see we've got almost five years of construction planned, you know, once we finish. So we're kicking off this project now, it's a two-year project, we're going to roll out the design for the boater facility and the haulout, and then we probably get another year of construction on that. And the boardwalk's going to be mixed in the middle of that as well. And then the master plan will come to completion, and that'll really tell us our path moving forward from there. And so I think we're really moving in a, in a good direction.
No, I, I, I believe that, and, but I would think that part of what I think the advisory committee could help with, and, and all of us really, I mean, many of us grew up here, and we, we know the kind of things that go on, and certainly we could provide some input to the engineering firm that's working on the master plan about things that we think would, would fit in well in our Marina and Bayfront. And, you know, we, we should, we should talk to the DMD Chair, the Alyssa Barrera, the, all of those people should have input into what we're doing, so that, as, as I said, while it goes, it's all connected, and it all makes sense.
And I think we got an excellent opportunity for that. With the meeting this afternoon, we're going to be working on scheduling the dates for the public input, for the advisory committee input for the master plan. And we're looking at sometime, hopefully early September, to get those dates. Their company's going to come down, do a walk through the Marina, and then work with us in those meetings. And that's going to be excellent time for the advisory committee to put their input. Alyssa is on that board, so I speak with her once a month. You know, and then we'll do some public outreach as well, and I speak with the tenants frequently. So I, I think everyone is putting that input, we just need to have a more formal method, and I think that'll come here soon.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, Jonathan, thank you. Councilman Sutcliffe.
Thanks, Mayor. Hi, Robert. I've got four, four items here. First of all, can you address the nine million dollar reduction in the SHOT funds from current year to next year? I saw that was a big, big number on the.
In the SHOT funds.
Breakdown.
Those were for one time. Oh, the, the North Beach, two point five million for the North Beach restroom, four point five for the Zon Road, and the, some capital lay, outlay in FTEs.
Okay, all right, thank you. With respect to the advisory committee budget here and the expansion, it says expansion of Ranowski Park Skate Park. So as you know, we've had discussions, Peter and I've had discussions, the mayor and I've had discussions, is that's kind of been a forgotten park in the bluff for a number of years. As you're aware, there's literally one developer around there that's spending tens of millions of dollars in that area, has been in the last six or eight years, has plans to do a lot more. And that park is literally right in the middle of all his assets. So he's, he's offered to collaborate with the city and, and wants to see it elevated, so I think we all have a desire to see that happen. So I just want to make sure that the way it's worded about expansion of the skate park, yeah, it's a very basic, simple, little skate feature there. So maybe expansion of that could be part of it, but I think the, the most critical, urgent thing for that park moving forward is to get a parking lot, to get some lighting, and some of those basic amenities. Maybe we could even throw in a, you know, whatever, a jungle gym or something for kids as well. But there certainly ought to be other amenities other than just a, kind of a basic antiquated little skate feature there. But anyways, lot, lot to be done there, but if we can hopefully focus on the infrastructure type stuff like the parking lot and, and lighting and those sorts of things ASAP, that'd be great.
Sure, yes, sir.
Yeah, and Councilman, I know you sent an email on that as well, so we'll have to look between the proposed and the adopted budget. If, if it's the, if it's the pleasure of the council to add dollars right now in the proposed budget. There's nothing, there is no dollars allocated for those simple things like the parking lot lighting. But our certified tax rule has come in now, and we'll see what the impact that does in our revenue. So we will make a presentation to the council, so much of what we did yesterday on that fire truck, for some investment in Ranowski if the council desires to do that.
Okay, great. Number three is, there was in here about additional launch sites for water sports such as kiteboarding, surfing. Obviously, the kiteboarding has been elevated, the discussion in the last couple of months. But I'd already started a conversation regarding a launch facility for boats and kayaks, and possibly all of it can come together into one facility. So I just want to make sure that that water sport is addressing boat launch and kayak launch. Because that's going to, that's going to impact way more people in our community than the specific niche of kiteboarders. I understand kiteboarders, I understand they have a lot of passion and emotion. We need to find, find out if that can be a part of the solution, hopefully it can. But I just want to make sure that we're, we're working on the boat launch and kayak launch, which we have zero of in Flower Bluff right now.
Yes, sir.
So, okay.
For sure.
Councilman, just to add to that, that's a, that's, you're right, there's none, none there in Flower Bluff, that's, that's public. So we have identified land that the city owns already near the Dimmitt Pier. And the goal is to do some pre-programming, pre-design, so we can include something in the 2024 bond program. That's a great location, there's already a parking lot that will expand, but a lot of the assets that there are ready. So this is a great add, we're glad that you brought it to our attention, and we want the community to know in Flower Bluff that that's something we're seriously looking at for the bond program. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Lastly is Commodores Park. Obviously, Tuesday was a big day to get the survey out there live. You know, in Councilman Pusley's comment about no splash pads in District Four, certainly that might be a part of it. That's one of the things I've heard is water features pool at Commodores, so hopefully we can get something like that done. And then also pickleball, you know, it's, you and I talk about it, and there's a, there's a uprising of folks on the island especially that want to, want to see more pickleball activity. So I'm quite certain when we get that survey in that it's going to be towards the top of the list, because they're already hitting it hard, so.
Yes, sir, and that's, that's what I expressed to our PRAC committee, that when we go through this community outreach and things like that, we know that pickleball's going to be high up there, so we'll, we'll, as we go move forward, we'll see what people have to say about Commodore Park.
Thank you, Robert.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. In looking at some of the, these items, on your park development fund and some of the things that you have scheduled here, it's kind of, most of it's a rehash of last year that you couldn't get to, right? You, in 2022, 2023 budget, it looks in the park development funds, you only spent a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars out of a budgeted two point nine million.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm looking at your park development fund page?
Okay, what page is that, Councilman?
In the proposed budget, two eighteen and two nineteen.
Okay.
For the park development fund, and that in District Five, we're, we're spending two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars or proposed this year, and the total is a total of three sixty-one. We have some in District One, District Three, and District Four, and then of course your district as well.
Right, you have kind of what you, some of the stuff that you'd planned from, from last year that didn't get done is, it looks like it's being planned for this year based on the budget. Is that, is this correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that led to some questions about how you have it set up in the, in the CIP, where you have park development funds in two different projects, or two different pages. On page eighty-six and eighty-seven of the capital improvement plan with some specific things in here, but they're not reflected in the operating budget where your park development budget is from. So for like example, you have the Billwitt perimeter fencing in the capital improvement plan with, with funding from the park development funds, but you don't have that listed as one of the expenditures here in the park development fund.
Okay.
Okay, so, and I'm seeing this as not being very, you know, it's not meshing up. Now, I, I don't know what the reason for that is, but I'd like a full accounting of the park development funds and how it's going to be spent. And, you know, I'm not really sure where the perimeter fence, what Billwitt came up. I know you had mentioned it as part of a, a larger kind of plan, and we had talked about this, about doing the, moving forward the master plan at Billwitt and starting the engineering process so we can have the design, or design and engineering process for the improvements to the parking lot and to the, to the roads, those kind of things. But perimeter fence doesn't really cover that. So I'm not really understanding what the language is with perimeter fence.
So you and I have spoken about getting, taking care of the perimeter before we do too much more investment there. That, so that includes securing the park, we know there's a lot of, what they, like, just take the ten million dollar investment that's happening with the swimming pool. We don't want that wide open where anybody can come in and steal pumps, steal whatever in the after hours, so securing the perimeter. Secondly, it doesn't have to be in this order, addressing parking lots, addressing circular movement within the park, whether you're in a vehicle or on foot. That's, that's what the design's for, we may have narrowed it too narrowly in the wording of perimeter fence.
Okay, so what I was looking at is correct, just like you said, is design of those elements within the aspect of what this budget was supposed to be, but you're right, the perimeter fencing doesn't necessarily cover with that language.
Then between now and the adopted.
Or change the language in the CIP for when time comes up for approval. And then also have these match, because they're, I mean, they don't match. There's, there's, it, you know, it, like I said, it looks like we took what was planned for last year where we didn't get to those projects and put them into this year and assigned budgets to them. So I, I would like a better, a better clarity on what actually is going to be done with this park development funding, and the fact that we still have to fall under the rules of when it was collected under the Community Enrichment Fund and making sure that's spent properly. Okay, so I, I want to see that a little bit better defined than this is, because it's, it's somewhat of a mess here.
Yes, sir.
With that, okay, so. If we can schedule some time before we vote on this, maybe sometime toward later this month, to kind of really go through that, I would like to see some very specifics.
Yes, sir.
And better language on the, on the park development pages for the CIP.
Yes, sir, we can definitely do that.
Thank you.
I'm going to go back to our FY24 enhancement page. Go the, the other way, I'm sorry. There you go, right there, thank you. Next slides will cover our FY24 enhancements. We're requesting 205,000 for the water garden and 19,000 for the Cole Park splash pad to provide upkeep and maintenance. That amounts request are prorated based on the expected project completion date. For Ocean Drive parks, pavement resurfacing, resurfacing of 270,000. These, these three pavement at the parks would be at Olander, Dodridge, and Swantner Park. 640,000 for irrigation, plumbing, and electrical improvements at West Guth and Sherwood. Moving on, Billwitt Aquatic Center, additional funding that is needed for the maintenance and, and operation of the center. The proposed budget is prorated based on an estimated construction completion date, which includes one-time cost. This year two budget is, would be $478,000. This budget would include personnel, lifeguards, pool mechanics, aquatics leads, building and grounds custodians. An operating budget of everyday operational expenses such as chemicals and maintenance for repairs, and repairs, and a one-time cost of truck lifeguard stands, picnic tables, safety equipment, chairs, bleachers, and IT equipment.
And Robert, the Billwitt park is one that you plan to have open more year round than not, right?
Yes, sir.
That's important to point out for the community because our pools generally close around Labor Day. But this, right after Labor Day, but this one would be open year round?
Yes, sir, along with Collier, we'll have two.
Yes, sir.
And this one's heated, correct?
Yes.
It's going to be heated?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, okay.
Which one, this one or Collier?
Billwitt, I know Collier, and Collier, the heated one.
Collier is heated, yes, sir.
Yeah, but is this one?
This is heated also?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Both pool systems or just?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I like just one. I think it's just the lap pool that's heated.
The lap pool would be heated, not the other.
Okay, just the lap pool is heated, okay.
The one with the kids splashing around is not going to be heated.
They can handle it. The kids, they can handle it, the cold.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I think only the lap pool is going to be open year round. I mean, the recreational side is, is not.
Yeah.
That's how it was presented in the initial site, so I didn't, but the lap pool is really important for, for year round.
Absolutely, and year round, yeah. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Sustainability initiatives, the department requests 250,000 to continue planting initiative throughout the city, tree planting. In FY20 and FY22, we planted 230 trees. And this year, we planted 400 trees along with the TXU Energy Grant that we were out there. That's me and the mayor and Councilman Klein, right there.
Planting a tree.
Planting a tree. Y'all had more dirt on y'all's shovel than I did, so it made me look bad, I'll change that picture next year. We're requesting 150,000 for operating heating and cooling centers at our six libraries and our eight senior centers. And Laura is here and we'll, we'll work, obviously, we'll work together on that as well.
That's an, can we just stop, that's an important one where we know we provide cooling centers right now in the wintertime, heating centers, but it's a baseline level of service. So, as part of our sustainability initiative recommendations, we recommended 150,000 more to improve that service level, to include things like storage containers that we're piloting right now for homeless who are reluctant to leave their belongings and go into a cooling center. More senior welfare checks, making sure seniors that might need access, might have to get out of their home, that, that may not be sufficiently cooled or heated. Transportation, we know RTA does provide free transportation, but getting from the home to the, to the bus stop could be a challenge for some seniors. And then just more general outreach, make sure the community, even though we advertise this substantially, is it getting to the right people? So, an enhancement of 150,000. We've been, some trendsetters in the state take the storage containers. In fact, we had a national paper evaluating whether or not to do a story on this. We haven't found anybody else that does this. We think it's a good idea, we're piloting it right now to see the use rate at our La Ratama Library, so.
Okay.
Moving on, our, our recreational improvements. $200,000 for signage. The current signage at city recreation facilities is, is older and in poor condition. We would replace all facility signage at recreation and senior centers as well as our sports complexes. 70,000 for a pool filter replacement at HEB Pool and Greenwood Pool. 105,000 for new basketball backboards at all recreation centers. The existing backboards are rusted and in poor condition and we will try to get those done.
Where, where does that 100,000? Oh, outside basketball backboards, okay.
And it's actually the whole structure itself, it's not just.
The backboard.
Backboard, it's the structure that hangs, excuse me, that hangs from the attachment.
So, we have how many, handful of recreation centers?
We have four.
We have four.
So, it'd be eight total backboards that we would replace.
Okay, okay. Councilman Hunter, I think you had a comment.
Thank you. Perfect timing, speaking of basketball courts. So, if you go back a slide of you wonderful human beings breaking ground with the new trees at, just so you know, this is the park. Now that we have a picture of all of y'all in it, now you know which park I'm talking about. If you look directly behind those buildings, there used to be a park on the other side of that. It's no longer there because the university bought it. And y'all have a policy that you're supposed to replace parks. It also had some, it had a basketball court, and I don't know what you'd call it, like a half soccer field. But now that you've put all the trees down in this park, there's no room for a basketball court. So, my recommendation is, is not this budget, but in a future budget, this part of the community literally drives downtown to our basketball court down here, and it's great. There's a huge, we're talking 30 people that show up at 8:00 AM on weekends to play together. But no one can do it anymore because CCISD has prevented us from going on any other campuses. So, if there is an opportunity, this place would be a great place for a basketball court because my house is like three houses down from there, so.
Yes, sir, noted.
Thank you.
As part of our long-term, term strategy, the department is proposing a Phase One of athletic field business program change at Greenwood, Salinas, and Billwitt. That would, we would be assuming full maintenance and responsibilities for all of the city athletic fields over a period of several years until the fields are fully city maintained. This year, we're hoping to add 13 park techs. That includes an operating budget and one-time startup cost of 413,000, which would be riding mowers, trucks, trailers, and trimmers and blowers. Along with our health department, this will be funded by the health department, but this is an initiative to propose to replace exercise equipment, including cardio machines and weights at all senior centers. The equipment is, is in poor condition and needs, and has exceeded its service life, and it's not commercial grade. And we'll be putting those in our senior centers. Yes, sir, it does. This slide will cover our shot fund. 270,000 to continue our security guard service at Cole Park Pier, which is very important to, and protecting our pier and down there at, at our park. 175,000 to replace a covered parking structure at the Gulf Beach. It has some extensive corrosion and structural components that, that need to be addressed. And there was an assessment, and the elements are corroded and, and the protected, protective coating have been weathered away out there at the beach. Also, there's $125,000 for an annual beach survey, which is required for, by the U.S. Corps of Engineers. And lastly, 25,000 for maintenance to provide upkeep and maintenance of the North Beach restroom facility. And the amount is prorated and is expected to, expected, prorated for the expected project completion date.
And just a quick update on that, yesterday, the work began on the, on this project. So, the old restrooms dating to the 50s were demolished and completely gone now. And you have a beautiful view now of the Gulf, the bay, I'm sorry, from that location. The new restroom would be set away from the beach, so you have uninterrupted access or views to the water. A lot safer for families because you have to walk around the building, you lost sight of the, of the family member. So, that project's underway. It's going to be, not only is it a restroom, but it's really a park and parking lot, elevating it, taking it out of the floodplain. So, we'll give you more progress, but it's just timely, it just began yesterday. Yeah, yeah.
And then we've, we've discussed our park development fund, but this is, the park development fund is, is shown.
Robert, where is London Park located?
Obviously, the London area, but I believe right there by the high school, correct?
Outside the city limits? Is it inside?
Yeah.
It is inside?
Right.
Okay.
Inside? Inside, yes.
Yeah, everything behind the, the school has been annexed.
Right.
Everything but the school. But everything behind it has been annexed to the city.
Yeah. Right, okay, go ahead.
And to address a couple, on our after hour kid power, the department is planning to conduct a strategic review of our after hour kid power. We'll reach out to CCISD shortly to start a discussion for, about the future of the program. We're looking at declining enrollment, and we're looking at more programming at our recreation centers and reviewing operating models at other cities. The table shows the program's budget over the last five years. And as you can see, the program has been operating in a deficit for the past two years and is projected to end in a deficit after FY23. This table shows the benchmark city comparison at, for after, after hours, after school programs. Four of the seven cities do operate after school programs, do not operate after school programs at the ISD facilities. Three cities do offer programming at the ISD facilities. However, the city of Fort Worth uses CDBG funding to offer, to offset its cost. And that concludes my presentation.
Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Mayor. Robert, thanks for the presentation. I had a couple of comments and questions, I guess, as well. I saw this was like back on page 37, increase in lifeguard salaries, I'm quite happy about that. Does that increase bring them up to par, I guess, with some of the other communities? I know we've been behind Port Aransas, I guess, in the past, I don't know if that's still true yet.
Right, it is bringing them up, and it's more of a retention, the, the longer they stay and the more they get paid. So, that's, that's how we're increasing their pay.
And is there additional training associated with that? Because I thought as well, somebody told me that, that the Port A lifeguards are also trained EMTs. I may be wrong about that, that's what I heard.
They're USLA trained, but they're not all EMTs, there are some.
All right, all right, thanks, Dan.
Some are EMTs, not all of them are EMTs.
Right, okay, great.
Yeah, Councilman Klein, we're going, Councilman Suckley brought to our attention the, this model that some cities have in, in America. And we're going to look at that through, after the summer season, which is that they're trained more as EMTs, maybe even trained by the fire department or reporting to the fire. So, that's in our business plan for this fall, spring, to see if we make any adjustments. From Councilman Suckley, I brought that to our attention.
Okay, good. And then I noticed that, I forgot what pages was on now, but there's 31,000 acres being mowed, park acres being mowed. I, I know, you know, obviously, the budget is the budget. I really would prefer to see an increase in pay for the mowers. Boy, especially this time of year, and by this time of year, I mean like nine months out of the year.
Yes, sir.
This is tough work.
Yes, sir, our park techs work, work daily and then, and they're out in the heat and they do a very good job. And they're, they're, they're going to be highlighted next council meeting.
Right.
A couple of them, and, and I, I receive phone calls and emails every day of how well they're doing.
Right.
And just some of the graciousness and humble that they, you know, they do certain things above and beyond what they're doing, so I agree, sir.
Right, okay. Yeah, I'd prefer to see an increase, I guess, in their, their, their compensation.
Yes, sir.
Because of that difficulty of that work.
Sure.
Given the environmental conditions.
Yeah, Councilman, so we, that group of employees, most of them probably fall in what we call the 100 series. Their salaries, all 100 employees' salaries were adjusted to the market.
Okay.
We're consistently having to do that, the 200 salary, the 200 range salaries, which is the next level up, probably some of them are supervisors. Their salaries, there's money in this budget to adjust the salary beyond the cost of living adjustment so that it's competitive and commensurate to the work they do. We're focused on that.
And at least being something else as well, again, I want to make sure I got, just stating this correctly. For the Parks and Rec staff generally, are cost of living raises provided for them on a regular basis, annual basis, or regular, so many, every so many years? My worry is that they're, that they're kind of lagging behind increasing cost of living.
Last year, they, I believe, everybody got a cost of living raise.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so they're no, we don't treat them differently than any other employee. We raise a whole series, as you call it, of employees. However, as I mentioned, we did do a across-the-board increase. And then in this budget, the current one we're in, all employees got a 4% cost of living increase because of the inflation we were suffering at the time. In this budget, we're recommending performance-based increases for employees based on performance ranging from 0% to up to 5%. And so, high-performing employees could see a 5% increase. That's budgeted as a recommendation in the, in this 24 budget.
All right, good. And then I had a question, I'd like to see clarification on this, this is out of the, out of the operating budget. This is on page 36 of the operating budget, summary of proposed positions. It looks as if there's going to be a reduction in the Parks and Recreation staff of 135 positions. Does that, has to do with how they're being funded, or is it actual reduction in staff?
Actually, some of that is, there was 185 positions for the after hour kid power that were taken away. Over the years, we have, have left schools. So, we started with 30 schools in the 80s and 90s, and now we're down to 17. So, those, those positions stayed on, so we just eliminated those. Those weren't, and as far as, and then we're adding the positions at Billwitt, 38 and then 13 positions for the athletic field business program that we're trying to start.
Right.
And, and the grants fund did lose five positions, but those were expired grant positions. So, those were just, they were against our, you know, vacancy rate and, and open positions that we got rid of that nobody.
Right, right.
Not used.
I just looked at the 135 and the staff numbers for the previous year were 566. So, I, my rough math, I guess it's about 25% reduction.
Right.
But you, you're, I guess you don't have concerns about that kind of reduction, excuse me, in your, in your Parks and Recreation staff?
No, sir, the 185 have not been used for several years, several years.
They've been in the books, but.
Yeah.
They were part of the after school program that the city offered, and there hasn't been, they haven't been filled in years. So, as part of their cleanup of the budget, we're eliminating temporary positions.
Yes, sir.
Temporary slash part-time positions. So, there's no reduction in this budget for full-time or part-time park service positions. In fact, we're adding quite a bit with the new pool and other amenities in the system. So, the, the reduction is expressly or 100% based on this, this evaluation and cleanup of the after hour kid power, as we call it.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Right. And then this is, something came up a number of months ago, I guess. Strictly speaking, I guess it's a budget issue. The for, forerunners that folks use, typically diesel powered, if you could look at revisiting that again as well. Not only from a financial standpoint, but also maybe from a health standpoint as well. The fire chief was talking about this last Monday, about the negative health consequences of diesel exhaust, certainly in the firehouses. I'd be worried about that, I guess, in the parks for people who are utilizing the parks then as well.
Yes, sir.
And just one last thing as well, I don't see anything in here, maybe I missed it in your presentation about bike trails. Is there any talk about trying to either create or enhance bike trails, either in the parks or between the parks?
Yes, sir, and I, we, we have sat down with our public works department who, you know, there's always a, a talk on, you know, it's parks, it's, it's public works. But we've sat down and, and they've assured us that they, they've applied for a surface transportation block grant, which would get improvements at all five districts. And I have a copy of that, and I can send that to you exactly where that's going to be and, and what they're planning on doing with those grants.
Okay, appreciate that. Actually, Councilwoman Campos mentioned that to me by text, and so if you would send it to both of us, I'd.
Yes, sir.
I'd appreciate that.
Yes, sir, I'll do that today.
Thank you much. And again, the, the storage facility at the La Ratama Library, I think, is a, is a very good idea. I hope it works, we'll have to see how, how it kind of pans out or plays out. But I think it's a very good idea. A lot of people are hesitant to go into there because they don't want to, they're afraid of losing their belongings.
Right.
Going into the library, thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman Klein. Thank you, Councilman Klein. I'm glad you brought up, Peter, the the, or I'm sorry, Councilman Klein, the contracts and the mowing, because I have received also, it's worth noting, just good compliments on on what, you know, how we're we're mowing, you know, our yards, yards, parks, sorry. I wish it was our yards. And I know we outsource our mowing contracts, and they're multiple.
Some, we, there's.
Yeah.
I don't know what the percentage is, but there is some contracted.
There's multiple.
Yeah.
And then in-house.
Then we have ours.
I mean, we couldn't do it otherwise, and I remember that decision was made based on, you know, this was the best way to handle it in the most responsible fashion, right, financially. But that said, I just want to, whoever's in charge of managing all of those contracts, kudos to them, because I know it's a big job, and it's a lot to manage in terms of, you know, how those get put out. So thank you to them. Second thing, on page forty four, if you could send us, I'm interested in knowing what each of these initiatives are costing. I know the total's three hundred and thirty three thousand, and this is for park development, uh.
Park development.
Improvements.
Uh huh. And I think I might add that list.
There's small, you know, shade structures with picnic table and grill.
Right.
Playground and mulch.
Yeah, we have the breakout.
Can we break that out?
Yeah, we have it broken out in the budget.
Yeah, I'd like to do that. And in in that same communication, if you would let us know, I want to know what each investment is per park.
Per leased parks?
Well, I think you've got other investments in parks as well.
Okay, okay, all parks.
You know, the, yeah. So, yeah, so for for example, here, all the parks work that are included in this budget, the investment, and of course, you know, what what district they're in.
That's a good idea.
And that would include this, yes. Now, the perimeter fencing for Bill Witt, so so why is that here and not in in the whole the bond?
Well, so the the developer, Park Development Fund, has resources that can be used within the geographic area.
Right.
So it's preparing, it's getting it shovel-ready for the twenty twenty four bond program, and we're going to change the nomenclature because it's.
Sure.
It's perimeter fencing, it's road interior vehicular and pedestrian roadway access and parking.
Right.
So the goal was, working with Councilman Hernandez, is let's begin to address it now so that when we do the bond program, it'll be closer to being shovel-ready. We know there's a lot of brand-new construction right around this park, and it's it's probably going to be the busiest one in District Five, so it's to get a head start on it.
Yeah.
Right.
I guess my question was more towards the funding mechanism used.
Yeah.
But you're saying it's because it's the development fund, and I understand how that all works.
Yeah, it comes from new construction, which is a lot of it is right around Bill Witt.
Right.
So it's a legitimate use of it.
And lastly, I know we're we're trying to get out here by by noon. I just wanted to bring up, and, you know, Councilman Suckley, I think you may have touched on it, looking, we've had extensive conversations regarding the lifeguard program, and he's very interested, which has come up before in in past years, but I know, Peter, we've had the conversations with you as well in terms of looking, and Mr. Dodd, looking at the lifeguard program and and what that would look like in terms of enhancing it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to touch on what you were talking about, about the master plan for Bill Witt and the perimeter aspect, it shouldn't be perimeter fence, but it was kind of in line with the budget policy that I'd recommended about doing the planning ahead of time, so you have a design and a, before you go to bond, so you have, so when you go to bond, you go right into construction, contracting, and move dirt within six months, similar to how we did that with the pool. And that way, your your estimates are a lot better. You have an actual design and plan, and it makes sense to do that. So we're we have, we're not waiting three years to do work on a bond that was elected on, that you have to wait for the design and all the procurement process that goes through. So I wanted to cover that. The, I also want to ask specifically about your business plan with taking over these park, with the ballparks, because just talking to the ones that are at Bill Witt, those guys spend a lot of money out of their own funding to do improvements. I mean, they don't do always, you know, they don't have enough to do the entire thing, but they do spend a lot of their own funding to do the improvements. How are you, I mean, you're going to lose that if you take over the the entire system. Is there a better, I mean, what is your model? How's that going to work?
We're going to take over the city maintenance, and I'm probably, I'm going to have Tyler address this if you could.
Tyler Florence, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. Yes, sir, so we took benchmark comparisons to one of our sport complexes that we currently run. That's where we derived this cost projections. That was from our Greenwood softball complex. So we're trying to anticipate what those costs are going to be. We're still looking at ways as we implement this model where we could potentially enlist the aid of these organizations to offset some of the minor ongoing maintenance or sort of area cleanup expenses. That's something we've been looking at other benchmark cities to do. So that's that's how we're trying to address those costs. Clearly, as we've seen the state of these facilities, they're not anywhere near the standard that we would want for our for our youth, for our our sports users. So that's why we're trying to proactively address these issues.
Okay, so what, how are you going to implement this? Are you going to start off at one location, try to prove it out, and then move out from there? Because, I mean, I'd hope you have some sort of, you know, lessons learned from a specific location, so you don't create a mess.
We're looking to implement this first at these three complexes, so at Salinas, Greenwood, and Bill Witt. It's approximately forty five fields, give or take. We'll try and utilize those lessons that we gained from doing this this phased approach and then implement that for the remaining fields in the coming years. We've already been doing a lot of the preliminary work already, a lot of the maintenance walkthroughs, compiling maintenance punch lists. In fact, we're already essentially getting started on addressing a lot of these maintenance issues as we go into this.
Okay, these are just the baseball parks, right? Not not soccer par, not the soccer fields, not the kickball fields, just the, just the?
It does, yes, sir, it does include those.
Includes all of them.
All the fields, yeah, so all these developed, so there's a certain portion of developed and undeveloped fields are in these in these complexes, the majority of which are baseball, kickball, or softball fields at these complexes, but then it also encompasses these multipurpose football, soccer fields as well.
Yeah, Bill Witt has a very large soccer organization there, South Padre Soccer League, but, okay, I want to keep my ear close to that, because I'm, I mean, anytime you mess with people's kids, you're gonna, you're gonna hear it from parents. I mean, okay, so please be very cognizant of that.
Yes, sir.
Also, I want to say, for the after hour kid power program, it used to be called something else, but I know I had my son participate at it Luther Jones Elementary, and after COVID, it kind of killed the program. Kids, you know, they just weren't going, couldn't couldn't get any revenue from it. So I guess it just, after getting out of the habit of using that service, they never went back to it. I don't know if there's anything you could do to improve that. CCISD has also kind of locked down their schools. At CAFI, they just put a perimeter fence around our library, so it's to prevent people from using their facilities, I guess. I guess they're also considered about security, but it seems like they're just blocking off the basketball courts, right? Also, on the trees, I know this is somewhat parks with AEP, but I've had some requests for some homeowners associations that would like trees on the medians in Yorktown, and we talked about that, but I don't know if we can access it through that. They also volunteered to pay for the irrigation and the maintenance of those trees. So I think that would that would help with those, with that aspect. If they wanted, if they want to help with that, there's several homeowners associations that do do that.
Right.
You know, they maintain it, they 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 cut the the grass, they irrigate it, they trim the trees. If we want to kind of do that to help that program to where we're not fully responsible for it, if we donate the trees to them, they'll they'll take care of it.
Great, yeah, we'll follow up with you, Councilman, that's important.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Oh, one last thing, I would like, there's some things on the line item budget that are, I want to just question them, but I don't want to take the time here with it. When you get me the information on the park, um, park development funds.
Sure.
Slash community enrichment funds, I want to go through with you those on those as well.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
Okay, real quickly, where's the central kitchen located?
Delmar Campus.
West.
West, Delmar West.
Delmar West.
Golf course, yes, sir.
Okay. So they let us use that for our central kitchen.
It's a hundred percent used by us, right, for the central kitchen?
It's a city facility.
It's a city facility.
On their campus.
Built on Delmar West Campus. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
We have, we're doing a generator over there, Councilman?
Yeah, I see that in the CIP.
Right. Lisa, you want to say something?
Sure. Sure, so the facility was built approximately now twenty three years ago, and it, the initial construction was with CDBG funds for the construction of the central kitchen. So it's an agreement with Delmar College, so whatever I would assume to like the FEMA dome.
And that supplies all the food to the senior citizen centers, right?
Yes, sir. And home-delivered meals.
And home delivery program. Okay. Okay. Robert, it's it's too late to bring it up in in this budget, but I need to get with you and Councilman Roy, the the city owns a park in partnership with New Haces County out on Haven Road, just down the street from the Taloso Midway High School. And a few years ago, the the city and the county went together, and the city actually donated, or well, put in some money for some improvements in that park. And to my knowledge, the city hasn't done anything since then. So I'd like to talk to Councilman Roy and yourself, and we sat down, I'll show you all the particulars about the park, but I think for next budget year is something that we could, we certainly ought to look at.
Yes, sir.
And maybe provide some help to the county on that. It's a really nice park, and we made some, the city put in some significant funds for, matching funds with the county to help do some improvements there. And I had Miles look up all of the legal stuff on it here a few weeks ago, the contract, the MOU, the all the information on it, so he's already sent that to me.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, that's all I had. Thank you.
Councilman Banera.
Thank you, Mayor. Here, and it may have been brought up while I stepped out for a second. So is everything entered in Maximo?
Yes, sir.
I didn't know. Did you bring it up while I stepped out? So.
I was surprised when he stopped.
I asked that to to our IT folks and asking it how putting that in, and they, he gave me the the report on that. That's why I didn't ask about it.
So that's a system to measure efficiencies and deficiencies?
Yes, sir.
So how have we calculated now what our deficiencies are by, you know, of where we need to be, you know? That's the whole thing. If we need resources to be able to do that, then to be able to do that, it gets caught up, you know, whether they be, whether it be capital, I guess we just need to be made aware of the challenges, because we don't want to have a situation, I mean, it won't be to that magnitude, but the American Bank Center. You know, if you have facilities that need to be improved, we need to know what the benchmark is of where we need to get caught up. And, you know, right now, we're, obviously, there's some fees here that I'm opposed to right now, but I think if there needs to be something set aside for capital improvements, we need to know what it is. So I would, if I'm correct, you could use that system to be able to determine that. Correct, is that a correct statement? So that's something that I would do. The other thing is, or I know we're still, because now we're taking off, taking over the the maintenance of the baseball fields.
Of three of this year.
Athletics fields, okay, so does that mean, so when when are we, because we still haven't figured out what we're going to do with the leases, correct? Or we still haven't decided? So we're not, now that we're we're counting that as an expense, are we counting any revenue in from the, no? I'm looking at you because I'm, I'm sorry.
Me, some, though, Councilman, Tyler can probably better explain it, but the, as Councilman, I don't know if it was Pusley or Hernandez, but they do spend money today.
Yeah.
On maintaining it. We think we can do it better because we have equipment and it's.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
So there would be some commens, there would be some level of rental fee, but it's going to be gradual, so there's not sticker shock, you know.
Well, I'm not worried about that. I'm asking, is there any revenue in this budget?
No, there isn't right now.
Okay, that's a simple question. You have to go after that.
The answer's no.
Okay, so and and just looking over here, and I'm on page fifty eight of the operating budget, so the Office of Director, you've dropped down a million dollars of from this, you know, what you planned to expend for this year, and you're at, you're budgeting two point two million. What's what's the what's the difference?
I would have to get that for you, and I don't know what what page y'all are referring to, but.
Page fifty eight of the operating budget.
Yeah. I don't know if Eddie has it. Do you know, Eddie? Yeah, let's see if Eddie can answer it.
Yeah, it says the estimated is three point.
I think it's some one-time items that were in twenty three, but we'll get the detail for that.
Okay, and now, so then athletics operation is another, let me see. Man, I need I need the other glasses. I need magnifying glasses on top of my glasses. Yeah, so athletics operations is one point two million increase.
You know, a lot of that is the thirteen positions that we've been discussing about doing more, city doing more maintenance on the athletic.
Thirteen positions is going to be one point two million, or it's that's all?
Well, that's not all of it. It was additional things, but.
Yeah, could you give me that information?
Yes, sir.
And some equipment.
And then, let me see, where's the other one that stuck out? Program Service Administration went up about four hundred grand?
I don't, I have to get the detail.
Okay, okay. And then, okay, yeah, we know where the aquatics is going. So that, okay, those are the questions I have, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I, if you took a cut in pay for a million dollars, we appreciate it, because it says Programs Director is there, so I'm assuming that's your department. Office of Director, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, all right, thank you.
Councilman Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, sorry about my comments earlier. I didn't mean to be too facetious or whatever the correct term is, but I do want to tell you all how much I appreciate you focusing on on all the athletics and the sporting events or areas. Growing up here, if you were a baseball player, you would play on a patch of grass that was worse than the worst potholed area in the city, and it made you a great baseball player because you didn't know which way the ball was going to go. But besides creating all-star MLB players here in Corpus Christi, we could also give them the feel, which y'all are doing, of playing on normal fields, and I really appreciate that. The West Side redevelopment of the entire park at Greenwood is going to be huge. I grew up playing there. Well, I've been on three teams there that traveled the nation. And we dominated everybody. I don't care, I mean, I sat the bench, the rest of the players were really good. But it was still exciting to watch all these people from little Corpus Christi travel the entire nation. And I think, uh, local teams just did it again recently, or made it pretty far. Um, outside of Cal Island, they always make it, Mike. But thank you for focusing on that. People from all over the state are talking about the five Ks and stuff y'all are doing downtown. Dad obviously likes that, so you may have, may be reaching out to him for some more sponsorships in the future. I think you should. Uh, because he really, really enjoys it and he likes spreading the word. All your athletics stuff, the mayor's walk in the parks, remember those? Those are a really good idea. And it's innovation. And what a lot of people may not notice is your background in basketball could really help us with these sporting facilities. You know what it takes better than anybody, a coach. I mean, if you're anything like a baseball coach, when you leave the field, you got an hour and a half of putting everything back up, right?
Right. Yes, sir.
So thank you for taking care of it. It is direly needed. The amount that y'all have done, I mean, this is going to be like redoing the roads in the city. It's going to take a long time. But we really, really do need them. We have five, uh, NFL Super Bowl players who've come out of Corpus Christi, but nobody knows that. One lived in my neighborhood.
Uh. We got baseball players?
We got a few All-Americans and, I'm sorry, non-Americans, All-Stars and, uh, World Series winners. We got a lot of that stuff down here. Maybe not basketball, we're not the tallest city. But. When it takes skill, we're going to be there, right? So thank y'all for what you're doing. Really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, Councilman Roy.
Uh, I, I really have just a kind of a statement.
Yes, sir.
Um, it's interesting because back in two thousand seventeen, when I first came on council, we had a shift where we were doing a lot of the maintenance in terms of the, um, you know, cutting the grass and all that. We were, um, basically doing that in-house. And we, and under the former city manager, we pushed, and I don't know if you remember that, we pushed a lot of it to, uh, contractors. Because there was a conversation, they looked at that model and they thought, okay, just the maintenance of the equipment, having somebody else be responsible. If they didn't do a good job, you can send them back out on the contract and so forth. So with, with that being said, and we're going, now we're changing and going back more to this model, just keep a, a really good eye on it. Um, because I've seen it go both ways. And a lot of it has to do with just the management of it. Which also brings me up to this point. I mean, when I look at Parks and Rec, because, you know, Parks and Rec, just the, the name has kind of a fun connotation, right? But you guys have a real serious business model. I mean, what you do in terms of diversification and what you look at and the scope of what you look at, it's a pretty complex business model. So just keep that in mind because as you go through and take on these new ventures, you're all, it's already, you guys are already, you got a lot on your plate. And so what I want to do, I mean, everybody.
Life is made easy with three-one-one. A fast and reliable way to report a problem and get information on city services. Everything from street repairs, gas or water leaks, animal care services, or even information on your trash pickup schedule. Call three-one-one or download the MyCC three-one-one app and get instant access to create service requests, upload information and photos, and submit your location to alert us to the area. Three-one-one provides solutions to everyday problems, anytime, anywhere, on any device. Get better quality, better service, and better results. Life made easy with three-one-one. Download MyCC three-one-one app today. You can submit a city service request quickly and easily by downloading the MyCC three-one-one app on your phone. Reporting street problems, tall grass, gas or water issues, or other concerns is simple on the three-one-one app. Just choose from a list of services, add a photo, answer a few short questions, mark your location, and hit submit. Everything you need in just a few minutes. Life is made easy with three-one-one. Download the MyCC three-one-one app today.
And by the end of the fiscal year, we are looking at having checked out at least seven hundred thousand items or possibly more. We would have done three thousand programs for individuals of all ages and we would have fifty-three thousand program attendees. We have four key services, and that is to lend material, to promote literacy, to provide programming for individuals of all ages, and digital resources. This next slide, we wanted to show because we really believe in trying to support our community in different ways. And one of the things, of course, that y'all are aware is we've been doing the cooling and warming centers. But we have also done food drives, uh, and benefiting the Coastal Bend Food Bank. We've done winter coat drives and, um, for individuals as well as, as for pets. And that, the ones that we do for the, um, pets, go, the, what we collect goes to the animal care services. The next slide shows our organization. We have sixty-four positions. We have six library locations. We actually have two in District One, two in District Two. The only location that we really don't have one, um, is in District Three. However, we've always seen, uh, McDonald as being in District Three because it's right at the border there. And we really provide services to that community in District Three. Our twenty-twenty-three achievements. We have, um, five thousand hotspots with internet service that we are providing to the community. And that was done with a two-point-four million dollar grant from the Emergency Connectivity Fund. We also recently were awarded seventy-five thousand from the Texas State Library Narcissus Commission. And we will be, we will be introducing services for children with sensory processing disorders. And there'll be more details on that in the coming, uh, weeks. The other thing, we're always looking at improving our customer service. And so we will be introducing first-time-ever, uh, online payment that individuals can pay their, make their payments online. We hope to do that, uh, prior to October the first. And last, um, we also recently implemented the virtual legal access kiosk that's being provided by the Texas Legal Services Center with funding from the Texas Legal Justice Foundation. So I've already touched on some of our performance measures, but one of the things here that, that we have, that I didn't touch on was our computer use. We have a hundred and one public computers and we are estimating that we will have, uh, have had fifty-five thousand sessions on those computers. And the other thing is our targets, we are gradually increasing our, um, performance measures. So we are looking at increasing for next year our checkout to at least seven hundred and forty thousand. And we will continue to try to increase as well as our programming and the attendance.
Uh, Laura, can I ask you on this page? So the, um, remember the, the laptops that I had contributed? So for veterans?
Yes.
Is that still being utilized in that manner, or are we?
So what we did with those is we, we did upgrade them because they did, did need to be upgraded. And what we'll be utilizing those is we have programs for children such as robotics, uh, and Legos and so forth that they will use those with. So that's how we're going to be, uh, using those.
Great. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
So for the library, uh, Department Proposed Budget, we're looking at seven point one million. And, um, that's for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. We're also looking at increasing positions by two, so, um, through, that will make us at sixty-six if that's, uh, approved. And we are, of course, a general fund. Uh, we're looking at our funding of seven point one million. Basically, what we're looking at here is forty-six percent goes to personnel. And for operating as well as allocations, each one of those is at one point nine. Just came out that way. The other thing, the other group that I wanted to really point out to you is the Friends of the Corpus Christi Public Libraries. This is a nonprofit organization that was established over sixty years ago. And they help us with funding for programs such as the summer reading program, uh, special projects and so forth. We also use them when we apply for grants that can only be given to a nonprofit organization. So we utilize them in that way. The other thing I wanted to point out, this year's Summer Reading Club, we, we, we are seeing increases. But, so I wanted to point out that from June the fifth through July the twenty-ninth, we had one thousand nine hundred ninety-seven children register for the summer reading program. We, they checked out eighty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-four books. And we had about five hundred and eighty-four programs with an attendance of thirteen thousand three hundred and sixty-four.
Mayor and Council, I just want to re, kind of reiterate that, this, uh, this nonprofit, uh, the Friends of the Libraries, we don't, we don't often speak of them. Uh, but they're working, they raise money, they're a big part of our library model. I personally want to thank them, uh, for what they do for our library system, the support they give our teams and our community. And I know we have one of our members here with us today. So, uh, it's a great organization, uh, that deserves, uh, some thank you from the city. Yes, ma'am?
Absolutely.
Yes, and, and pointing that out, uh, what you see there is also the self-checkout station that, that they paid for, for those to be in each of our six library locations in the children's area. And that was at a cost of about seventy thousand dollars. And we do have a library advisory board that, um, consists of nine board members and they are appointed by the city council. And the board is in support of the following two enhancements that I'm going to present to you. Our first enhancement has to do with increasing security guard service hours at each of the five library locations to provide coverage during all operational hours. So what you see there is the hours of each of the libraries, the branch libraries are open. And so, for example, Hopkins, if you total those hours, that comes out to fifty-two. What we want to do is increase our security guard service by twenty-five hours. All of them right now receive thirty hours, but we want to increase them as needed to, uh, be at the operational hours. That also includes having a guards there fifteen minutes before we open as well as fifteen minutes after we close. Any questions?
Is that, that concludes?
No. Okay, I'm just, I was looking, I wasn't sure you had a question.
Actually, we do. We have some, yeah, we do. Yeah. Councilman Suckley. And then you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, so it's great, we've got additional usage of the libraries. Uh, I, I would have never guessed that until I saw the, the statistics here, so that's great to see. Um, is it broken out by particular libraries? I mean, for example?
We can't provide the statistics for each of our locations. I don't have them with me, but I can provide those.
Yeah, that'd be great if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And Councilman Suckley, the landscaping at the, is it the Hart Library? That's underway?
Yes, we're, we're looking at that.
Right. Yes.
That is being, is being handled.
Great, I think it got destroyed with the freezes and it's just not been addressed, so that'd be great.
But we are looking at it.
Great, thank you.
It's in the process.
Yeah, it's in the process of being landscaped.
Yes.
Right?
Councilman Roy.
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, I appreciate what you guys are doing. Uh, it, it's interesting, uh, years ago, when I used to travel a lot, like two-hundred-and-ninety days out of the year for a company, um, instead of hanging out in the hotel room or other places, I decided that, you know, I'd go check out my public library. And, uh, so I think what you guys are doing is invaluable. One of the things I, as I look at, um, just in the community overall, the, in, in my district, is that when I visit the libraries, I see a lot of younger, like children. I see some adults, but as far as like teenagers, right?
Yes.
Um, and I know that there's a lot of other things going on. But do we do any public service announcements or anything that we can do to try to get teenagers or, you know, the youth engaged in getting into our library?
Yes, um, and I'm glad you brought that up. I've always said we work really hard to, with our children. We lose them when they're teens and then we want to bring them back, and they come back when they're adults. But a few years back, we started a, a teen advisory board. Um, it's not part of your group, it's just kind of a group that we were trying to develop as, so that we could get some input from teenagers from across the city, not just in one area. So of course COVID kind of made that go downhill. So we're trying to revive that again. And, uh, we also are developing at each of our locations some teen areas for them to congregate at. Because many times they, you know, they want their own space. So for example, at La Ratama, we have an area now for the teens. Uh, we do, do teen programming. Um, I did not bring the statistics of the teens that participated in the summer reading program, but I can provide those. Um, we don't get a lot during the summer, you know, it, it is summer for them. But that is one of the things that we are trying to remedy because we know that we have, uh, we don't have as much participation from our teenagers.
Yeah, and I think the other thing is, is there's, you know, there's good in attracting teenagers, but there's also issues that come with that. So increasing your security and doing some of those things, I'm sure that's important. But, uh, yeah, I ju, I just think that, as I, you know, you go out in the community, there's just a lot of kids that aren't embracing reading. They're not in, you know, they want to stream everything. So anyway, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Pusley.
Yeah, Peter, are, are we progressing with the La Ratama Library, uh, improvements, the landscaping and all that? Is that underway yet?
It is, yeah. So, uh, we selected the firm that's going to help us.
Yes, uh, we met with them a coup, about two weeks ago. It's Solca Nava in Torno. And so that process has started.
Okay. Yeah, and that's a, thank you for bringing that up. It's an important project. You can see, we're recommending some staff in the library, so it'll, it'll enhance the exterior painting, uh, better landscaping, better, uh, the storefront, if you will.
Sure.
Uh, right now, it's, it's a dirt, uh, with overgrown shrubs and trees that are, that are destroying the, the plumbing underneath.
Yeah.
So there'll be some exterior treatment there as well as in the back to connect the library to the, to the park.
Park, yeah.
Right. Yeah, it's a great project, so.
Yeah, I think it's something that's been, you know, long overdue.
We agree.
When you drive by there, it's not very attractive and.
I agree.
Uh, not appealing and, and it doesn't look safe. Anyway, well, that's good. I'm glad to hear that. And thank you.
Yes.
Great, great job and, and we really appreciate all your efforts. Thank you very much.
Uh, Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Laura, are you familiar with the House Bill nine hundred that passed this legislative session?
Is that related to?
Libraries?
Yes.
School libraries mainly?
Yes.
Not censorship.
Well.
Ratings.
Rates, ratings, yes.
Ratings, right? So we operate two libraries that are, uh, close proximity to, to schools. One in Flower Bluff and one at, uh, the Garcia Library.
Yes, sir.
And do our, do our, I don't believe any library has a rating system for their books. And I was, I went to go visit the Garcia Library yesterday evening, so I went to take a look at some of the books that were available there, including graphic novels as well as DVDs for anime shows and those kind of things that had mature ratings on them. Do our, I guess, employees, uh, prevent those books from being checked out by, by kids?
No, sir.
Under the eight, under the rating mark?
We do not have a rating system, uh, that will basically be, uh, in the public schools. Um, we basically leave the decision as to what the children take up to the parents.
Okay. So we do not, I mean, everything ha, I mean, it's, it, uh, when I started looking at this, it was kind of surprised me that books didn't have necessarily ratings on them. Music has ratings, movies have ratings, uh, video games have ratings, but, uh, books do not have ratings. And even the ones that do have the ratings on them, we don't apply to them. We don't apply them.
No, sir. Again, uh, if it's a child, it's up to the parent to make that decision. Uh, we do have areas such as, you know, the adult section, the, the teen sections, the YA, or the juvenile sections, but we do not put any ratings on it. I know there's discussion about having publishers start putting ratings on them, but right now, at this point, it's just with the schools.
Okay, yes, because that's going to, they're going to be required to have ratings on them to be in order to be in public lib, uh, I'm sorry, school libraries, correct? My guess is that it's eventually going to come to all libraries at some point. The, with regards to that, you also have online services for eBooks, correct?
Yes.
Which includes Hoopla?
Cloud Library and Access three sixty.
Right, cloud, I guess they call it Cloud three sixty on your website.
Okay.
So there, uh, I guess there's no rating mechanism there for, let's say, a kid comes online and just picks whatever.
No, sir.
Wants with no restrictions whatsoever.
None at all.
And the eBooks don't, or the, these companies that provide this service don't provide ratings or requirements either.
Again, it's going to be up to the parent to patrol that. It's just like internet service, you know? Parents have to watch what their children are, are looking at on the internet.
In the lib, in the library?
At, at home or anywhere, I guess, you know, from a parent's point of view, it would be up to the parent to do that.
Well, while I was at the library, I saw that you had a, I guess, part of an ordinance that you can't just leave your kids there by themselves.
Yes, sir.
And you could call the police and have them ask, uh, child protective services for leaving the kids there at the library.
That would be if, uh, we have had instances where someone does not come to pick up their child at closing. And if we needed to take that action, we. And if we needed to take that action, we would. We always, if there's a child in the building, we always attempt to contact a parent guardian. We look at the locations. There are some locations that we know that the child is better being in the library than outside of the library. If the child is not being disruptive, we will monitor the situation. What we look at is, okay, the child's been here three hours, four hours, whatever the case might be. Have they been fed? Has somebody come to, you know, pick him up to take him to eat? So we will look at different situations, but we do not automatically call police or anything like that. We always attempt to contact an adult.
Okay. I would have the expectation that this is going to trend in that way for us to require, have that. We might start taking a look at what, you know, what we're providing, the types of books. I went through these, some of these, and.
We do have a selection policy that has actually just recently been reviewed by our advisory board, library advisory board. We just did it actually this week, and we will continue to review that. But at this point, we are not looking at providing ratings for any of the material. Again, it's up to the individual checking out the material.
Okay, I understand your point, your point of view, but everything else has ratings on it. You can't buy, you can't go to GameStop and buy a game if you're under a certain age and it has a mature rating on it. So this is something that I think is going to be the trend. It's not censorship, but I would imagine this is going to come in that direction.
It's possible. One of the things we always say, you know, print is different from visual. And that's why on our computers, we do have a filtering system. On our PCs, at the public computers, we are required to have that. And so we do have a filtering because again, that many times is just visual. So that's what we kind of look at as also. But yes, I know, sir, that you're, what you're talking about because it is a trend in some communities now that they do want the ratings.
And in the spirit of time, Councilman, I think she's noting, you know, what you're, what you're verbalizing.
Concerns, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilman Suckley. Oh, okay. Councilman Hunter.
Mine would be real quick. What's y'all's computer replacement schedule like? Like your life, lifespan of your computers before you need to replace them in the library?
We actually just replaced all of them, so hopefully we won't replace anything till about three years from now.
Three years? Okay. The three years is, yeah.
About three years.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty good considering technology speed. And on your fundamental programs, do you have like specialty classes that you can use since these computers are three years old? That means they're going to be up to date for a lot of different things, especially recently. I don't know, graphic design, because y'all were talking about getting kids into these places after school. And there were a lot of programs that drove us, you know, outside of video games, that drove us to the library where our parents couldn't drag us out till eight o'clock. And since we are past 12 and everyone's packing, I.
I do have one more enhancement.
I, I'd hope that, could you contact me? And maybe I could look over some of those programs again.
Sure.
Refresh myself.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
Laura, you want to go through the last one?
Yes. Our last, our second enhancement will be to add two library impositions at the Loretama Central Library at a cost of $98,000. We realized that they will be housed at Loretama, but they will be used to provide services throughout the system. One of the things that has happened to us throughout the years is we had a lot of cuts. We used to have a reference department, which is no longer there. And so we did evaluate best practices throughout the state. And we are one of the few cities that does not have any reference services because we just don't have the staffs to support that. Also, I know that the city managers has brought out that right behind us at Loretama, the Palms at Blucher is coming up, and that should have, according to their website, at least 285 residents that we want to do some outreach to as well.
Okay, so the librarians are going to, what are?
They're going to be housed at Loretama, but they'll be used to do like outreach, provide, ask librarian services, which we don't have right now, either virtually, chat, or through email. And for the local history department also to help us when people want to do research and so forth.
It just seems like 98 is a little low for two librarians.
That is not a full year for.
Okay, I was going to say.
Yes, because we, you know, by the time we actually get this process going, we probably wouldn't be hiring anybody till around January, so.
Okay. Well, as long as their salaries are going to be.
Yes, no, no, they will be. They will be. Yes, no, I, I agree, yes.
Okay, wonderful. Councilman Klein.
Thanks, Mayor. Hi, Laura. Thanks for this presentation. I think you folks are doing great work there. I had just a couple of questions. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong about this, my understanding is that the operating budget for the Corpus Christi library system averages out to about 63% of the operating budget for library systems in other cities around the state. Am I correct in that or am I incorrect?
I don't have the exact number, but we are at the low end.
We're lagging behind.
Yes, we're lagging behind, yes.
Yeah. Have we made any strides toward trying to close that gap in your tenure?
We have in the past few years. I mean, we really have seen a lot of improvement. We have not had any cuts. We have actually had even some of our part-time positions. The hours were raised, the salaries have been raised. And so we haven't had cuts. There was a time where we were, because of all the cuts, that we were in danger of losing our accreditation. But for the past four, five years, well, basically since City Manager Zanoni came on, we have not had to face that. It got to the point where Eddie knows what I always say, if you can't give me something, just don't cut us, because every year we were getting cut, you know, quite a lot.
Right.
And that's why I said we, basically because of those cuts, our reference department was eliminated. We had, at that point, we had 11 full-time professionals. It was actually a total department of about 15, 16 people that was totally eliminated. So, and that was at Loretama because we provided services for the, for the whole system.
Right. I commend you for making do with, under those difficult circumstances. I think that we should do what we can to try to narrow that gap further to bring the library back up to standards, commensurate with the rest of the state.
Yeah, Councilman, we agree. That's why this is my fifth budget, and every, in every budget I presented, we've added to the library. Unfortunately, it's been a lot of adding that has restored prior levels. So admittedly, we're still behind by years.
Yes, we were hoping that through gradually adding individuals, at least within the five, next five years, we would have at least five new librarian positions to provide other services.
Right. And we have, we do have two libraries that we don't own. They're in partnership. Well, I guess we own one of them, but they're in partnership with the school. So in the growing South Side area, we have to evaluate a new library to move out of the one that we're currently in that has limitations with access. So this need, like most of our operating departments, we need significant investment in this department as well. It takes resources.
Right. So are we talking about the Garcia Library down in the South Side?
Yes, it's the Garcia Library, and actually, that's, that's the one that Councilman Hernandez was referring to. That's a joint facility with CAFI. Now, CAFI is moving out of the building. They're moving their library into the actual school. So we'll have a little bit more space, but that is a very popular location. It's also one of our smallest libraries.
And is there an option to expand that facility, or are we looking, because of the growth of the South Side, it created a building, an entirely new library?
The land sits, the building sits on the school land, so there's no space to expand there. But there has been discussion about doing something on perhaps property that the, that the city owns. It's right next to Brockhampton Park.
Yeah, Brockhampton Park, which is right next to there, has sufficient land for a brand-new building. That's the plan so far. I have met with Superintendent Hernandez about buying the building from us, and he's interested. And I met with him about two months ago to go over this with him in his office. And just this week, we sent him the appraisal of the building, so he has an idea of funds that he would need to get. They're interested in the building, so we can sell it to them, and then we can use those funds as seed money for the design of our new library.
All right, good. Thank you. Just a couple of other questions. Using libraries as heating and cooling centers, I think is a great idea. I'm concerned, though, I guess, given the state of your budget, is the heating and cooling, that service, is that coming out of your budget, or is it coming from another budget?
At this point, we haven't really had to do anything different because what we're providing is basically the staffing. We are, at this point, as Robert Dot brought up, we'll be looking at some of those funds possibly to use with us. But right now, there hasn't actually been any funds technically that we have used.
Right. I think, again, you guys, I think you're kind of stretched to the bone as it is. I'd prefer to see that, that kind of, the services, again, which I think are very much worthy, sourced somewhere, somewhere else outside of the library budget because you guys are stretched so thin already. But it is a great service. I do applaud that. I also wanted to ask you about this. It's my understanding that, that there are social worker interns, social work interns working in the libraries, like Loretama, maybe some of the others as well.
We have a partnership with Texas A&amp;M Kingsfield because they have the social work program there. And so we've done it a few times now. The, the idea was to do it enough to where we can gather some data and then apply for some grants to actually hopefully hire a social worker. But it's also a trend now that there are librarian social workers. Some of the cities, like San Francisco and some of those cities, actually have social worker librarians on site to provide services to the community.
Okay. And do you think you're in a position yet to have, have you acquired enough data to?
We're going to do one more semester, and then we're going to try to see what we can do.
Okay, appreciate that. That's pretty good. And one last, I think it's the last question, yeah, bury nuts and bolts question. My understanding is that the hours, operational hours for each one of the libraries, around six libraries around the city vary. Why is that? Why are they not standardized?
One is, of course, staffing, but the other thing is we look at the service area and we see what the needs are there. We also have them staggered because in order to meet accreditation, we have to be open 64 hours. Now, they don't have to be 64 hours at one location as that, as long as they're not duplicated hours, we can count. So we open like, the Hopkins Library opens at nine. If no one else is open between nine and 10, we count that hours as being part of the requirement for the state library. The other thing is we, you know, we do look at, like I said, the service areas. And so at this point, at one point, Loretama Central Library was open 70 hours a week. And of course, because of cuts, we had to reduce. Now we're basically at 42 hours because of all the cuts we had. So it just depends on the service areas and what we're looking at. But right now, we're doing that for the purpose of being able to be sure that we meet our accreditation requirement hours. City of our size, like I said, needs at least 64 hours a week.
Right. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to give you props as well for your local history section at the Loretama Library. I've used that extensively myself, and it's really a goldmine up there. And thank you so much for keeping that up.
Thank you, sir.
Laura, thank you. That's all the questions, and really thank you for everything you're doing because I truly believe that libraries are a community hub. And they are a place where people connect with people as well as, you know, a digital sector. But it's so important now. And a lot of the resources that, that we are offering, that you're programming, and we're very grateful for that, are ones that people can't, they don't necessarily have easy access to or can afford. So it's important that we, as the city, have this in place. And we continue to grow it and support it and make sure that it is accessible to everyone, all of our residents. So with that, that's going to go ahead and conclude our, our budget workshop today. And we're just going to have to kind of push the others. I'm so sorry to do that. I know Dr. Khan is here. And then who else did we have? Part, CCAC, yeah. Where is he? Did I see Joel?
Animal care.
Okay, yeah. So I apologize for that, but I really want our full attention. And I want, I think it's going to be better served if we, if we start with them moving forward.
We can, if, we'll put it on as an option if the council wants to do it on Tuesday. If we end the council meeting early, if the business goes quickly.
Oh, which I think we might though.
There's some time options there to kind of get caught up, maybe an hour or something on Tuesday.
Right.
So we can get everything done because there's still, there's requests for even more material that we'd love to show you, but time is.
Right. And Tuesday might be a good option because I don't think, it doesn't look like a very extensive.
Right. So just to let the council know, you know, we won't get out any later than what we normally do, but there's a gap of time there. We'll bring one or two of these departments back.
Sounds very good. Thank you, but thank you for being here, Dr. Khan and Joel. We appreciate it. I'm sorry we didn't get to it, but I think it would be better served, you know, on a fresh day. Okay, thank you. Okay, well, and I want to recognize Julie Travis Rogers, who's here, because you are a big part of the library, and you're on the board, on the Friends of the Board, and everything else that supports libraries. So thank you for taking the time to be here.
Well, I really appreciate you all moving our city forward, including the libraries. I've certainly seen a change in my time with the board. Thank you all so much.
Thank you for your advocacy, Julie. Okay, with no further business, I adjourn this meeting.